Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, April 22, 2019. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 15, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 15, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 15, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, may. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Massa.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Seiya, I have not heard from. Mr. Moretti.
Present.
And Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quarrel.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the government of which it stands, one nation, under God, in this whole great and just forum.
Mr. Truck, will you mind swearing in the professionals, please? Thank you. Eileen, before we move on, I just want everybody to keep in their hearts and their prayers the people in Sri Lanka. You know, that's a major tragedy to happen. And, you know, just hopefully that would never come to our soil again. But, okay, approval of minutes, regular meeting, March 11, 2019. Eligible voters: Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Seiya, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Massa. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Minutes of regular meeting, March 18, 2019. Eligible voters: Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, San Clemente, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco, oh, excuse me, no, you're not eligible. Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Regular meeting, March 25, 2019. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Moretti, Nansen. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Hughes. Seconded by Mr. Moretti. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
I have no correspondence, but Mr. Kaplan is here and wishes to address the board regarding the case for Robert Dolores Kowalski, which is on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Mr. Kaplan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yes, sir.
My name is Alan Kaplan. I'm here, I represent the Kowalskis on your, she was number one on your list tonight.
Yes, sir.
We needed more time to forget the planner, to do the report and all that, to, for the continuing testimony. So, we had requested an adjournment. I understand we, at the previous meeting when it was carried, we gave an extension on the time to decide, so we're gonna extend that extension further. I believe the next meeting that we had available was June something?
We talked about June 24, 2019.
So respectfully, we'd like to have it carried to that date with no further notice.
And the extension of time through the end of June?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anyone in the audience for case number BA 1802, Robert and Dolores Kowalski? This case will be carried to June 24, 7:30 PM with no further notice. Extension of time is granted through the end of June.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other correspondence.
Let me get back to my page here. Resolutions, case number BA 1807, Sixtree Four Field LLC, resolution granting use variance approval. Eligible voters: Hughes, Massa, Mertens, Moretti, San Clemente.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes. Seconding, no, you're not available.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
And, that's it, sorry.
That's it.
Motion carries. Resolution memorialized.
Case number BA 1837, CTC Landscape and Resolution, granting use variance and minor site plan approval. Eligible voters: Hughes, Massa, Mertens, San Clemente, Moretti, and Nansen.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Mertens. Seconded by Mr. Massa. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Massa.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized.
Thank you. Okay. The, I'm gonna move the cases around here a little bit. Case number BA 1833, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, use variance, bulk variance, and minor subdivision. Application of Prince of Peace Lutheran Church as applicant and owner seeking minor subdivision approved with bulk variances to create two new 15,000 square foot lots, residential building lots, and use variances for deviations from conditional use standards and expansion of existing non-conforming use, namely Heavenwood Monastery School in the existing one-story education building on premises known as Block 59, Lots 5, 434 Aldridge Road. After some testimony, March 11, 2019, this application was carried to April 22 with no further notice. Expiration date, May 8, 2019. Eligible voters: Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Seiya, and Nansen. Mr. Kaplan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're back here tonight, we've made some changes after the input from the board and its professionals.
You can sit, so you could be picked up on the mic, sir.
Oh, is that better?
That's much better.
As I was saying, we were here, the last time we were here, we, matter was carried. After input from the board and professionals, some substantial changes were made to conform to those changes, and I have Mr. Michael Geller here, our engineer, who can testify to those changes.
Okay. And, Mr. Geller, you were previously sworn, correct? If you would just state your name for the record again, please?
Michael Geller, that's G-E-L-L-E-R.
Proceed.
I'll be testifying tonight as a professional engineer and professional planner.
Got new exhibits?
What I have on the board is actually the submitted minor subdivision plan. It might be already in the exhibit list.
A-14 is the minor subdivision map, and A-13 is the concept grading plan.
And that's A-15?
The concept grading plan's A-13.
A-13, okay.
They've been marked.
That's what we have on the board here.
Yeah, they've been marked.
They've been marked already.
They have been marked?
Yes.
We don't need to sign up?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, Mr. Geller, you had previously testified to this site plan and subdivision, and you've made some changes since that time. So rather than go through all the stuff you've already testified to, let's have you talk about the changes that you've done and any other necessary background on that.
You got it. The minor subdivision has been revised to create, instead of two, the agenda's a bit in error at this point, it's actually creating two 20,000 square foot lots, and that's in accordance with the R2 zone. We had previously been proposing 15,000 square foot lots, and that has been changed to where the two lots proposed, fronting on Woodland Drive, is Lot 502 and 503, and they have lot areas either equal to or in excess of 20,000 square feet. And they will comply to all bulk requirements of the R2 residential zone. The second change that was made was really a physical change. It was more, we had an environmental consultant, Dubois Environmental, Anthony Silva, I believe he's testified before this board before. He prepared a freshwater wetlands investigation report, and that was dated, if I can find it.
March 28, 2019, that's Exhibit A-12.
Yes. March, and that's A-12, and that was in the package that was submitted, and that freshwater wetlands investigation reviewed the area of the proposed lots and the rest of the property and found, concluded that there are no wetlands present or wetlands buffer present on the property. That was a concern that the board professionals raised previously. That summarizes the changes. Other than that, the resulting change in making the lot size larger is that the remaining lot for the church property, which requires a minimum lot area of five acres to be consistent with the conditional use standards, has been reduced to what was 4.9 acres to about 4.67 acres in area. And as such, a D3 variance is required for that reduction of lot size that's proposed in less than the required five acres. So having said that, I believe the D2 variance for the expansion of the Montessori school was testified to last time. We had the president of the church and the director of the school gave testimony on March 11, and we still stand by that same testimony at that time. As far as the proofs for that variance, I think we had summarized them, I wasn't sure if it was covered, but we reviewed the Howell ordinances, and up until 2014, the R2 and the R3 zones both permitted schools as conditional uses. As you recall, the school was previously operated by the Prince of Pete's Church in that education building, and from 1977 to 2013. And then from 2014 to present, the current Montessori school was operated with one classroom. And the proposal is to expand that as described in the prior testimony, where the school would have, be expanded to the full area of the building and would have a maximum, I forget what it was, that was testified to. Bear with me one second. The maximum number of students would be 32, and four classrooms would be in the building. So the reason that the site, I feel, is particularly suited for this use and expansion is the school is there, has been there, and it's a current use. The expansion can be accommodated in the existing building without any physical expansion, and the current parking adequately serves the existing school and the proposed expansion. And we feel that the expansion of the school is inherently beneficial, as it promotes general welfare. It provides a sufficient space and proper location in that this already houses a school and was previously approved to house schools. And also, as you may recall, it takes private children up to kindergarten age, and this is a coordination of activities, is a purpose of zoning, is Section M to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to more efficient use of the land. In this case, with the education that's proposed, this is an ongoing advancement of a public preschool and a nursery school, and this education supplements the public school system, so it's actually meeting, I think, that purpose of zoning as well. And I don't think the proposed expansion has any detriment to the public good or would have any impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. As far as the D3 variance for the proposed lot, which is proposed Lot 501, that's the remainder for the church, it's required to be five acres, but it's only 4.67 acres. This deviation is partially due to the, if you recall, there was a 0.22 acre taking in the, along Aldridge Road when the New Jersey DOT built the ramp onto Route 9, and that resulted in a loss of area from the subject property. We feel that that was for the purpose of promoting good traffic flow. The test case for a D3 variance is the Coventry Square case versus Westwood Zoning Board, and the required proof is that the applicant must show that the site will accommodate any problems that would be associated with the deviation from the conditional use standards. In this case, as you can see on the minor subdivision map, the concentration of the development of the site is in the south easterly corner. The rear north easterly corner is open space, as is the very much westerly portion adjacent to Woodland Drive, even when you take out the two proposed lots. So having said that, I don't believe there'd be any substantial detriment to the public good by the reduction in the lot size being less than five acres. And I don't believe it would impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zone ordinance. As I said, the deviation is partially due to a public taking for the improvement of transportation facilities, and the site can continue to function as it currently does. So that is, the site will accommodate any of those problems that are associated with a deviation. And lastly, I think the board can view that the deviation is de minimis, where five acres required and about 4.67 acres is proposed. So we feel that that standard is met, and I think the board can approve that D3 variance as well. Now, the only thing we didn't talk about last time, as senior professionals report, is the buffer and screening requirements.
There may be water. There may be water in the house, no?
There's a 50-foot wide four-season buffer is required between residential and commercial sites, and this buffer has not been provided, you see there's a 50-foot buffer now depicted on the plan along the residential lots on the church property, and part of the parking is within that buffer. That's considered a buffer encroachment. The buffer that's required is essentially between the education building, which is a commercial use, and the nearest point of the lot. Now, that distance is in excess of 200 feet, and the four parts, thank you, Eileen, I appreciate. The four parts that go into the buffer requirement is, must be either a landscape fencing or walls at least 10 feet in height, or a landscape berm at least 6 feet in height, or a building setback measured from the buffer line or at least 200 feet, and/or a parking area setback at least 100 feet. I believe two of those have to be met, be a buffer. So in this case, there's a six-foot-high fence proposed along the residential lots, which is residential in style and keeping with that for residents, and there's the 200 feet. And so, the intent of the buffer is attempted to be made by the church people here, and the other thing that's brought up is the tree planting, and I see your tree expert has cited the need for planting of trees in that buffer, and the church will agree to plant trees in that buffer, evergreens, to supplement the fence, which is only 6 feet high in lieu of 10, and the adequate distance that's provided to the education building. And we hope that that will meet the variance standards for that deviation, for that small area of parking lot that's in the buffer.
Mike, do you, do you have any problems working with Sherri on this?
Not at all.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I mean, our ordinance does not regulate the buffer based on the distance to the actual structures, it's the lot. So that parking lot is like a couple feet off that residential lot line.
Right.
So, you know, Sherri had issued a letter dated April 17, which identifies this as still being a variance and recommends additional screening. So I would say that the applicant should work with her office to ensure that some type of separation has been there. I mean, technically, they would need the buffer not just from those two new tax lots, it needs to be around the entire perimeter, even across the street, that's how our ordinance reads, it's not just those new residential lots. But the site is heavily wooded along those, along that lot line, along Woodland Drive, and the rear against Lots 7, 8, and 9. So I would just recommend that whenever they work with Sherri, that she's comfortable that that existing wood line is sufficient to provide a buffer, and any additional supplemental plantings be installed, you know, if it's a, if it's a very high canopy, you know, someone standing there might have a clear shot, so they may need some additional plantings at ground level, but I would defer to her office for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any objection to that?
No, and as requested, it's not, the 50-foot buffer will be extended along the westerly property line, along Woodland, and along the northerly property line backing up to the lots on Crest Drive.
Okay.
We will do that, and we will work with Sherri on the plantings.
And what's along the eastern, what's on the other side of the eastern lot line?
The easterly lot line is predominantly a detention basin that serves the adjacent major subdivision development, if you look at the area map. Well, I guess the northern couple of lots, maybe, we could extend the buffer to the extent of the residential lots that are immediately east, but the remainder's a detention basin lot.
Right, but that technically is still a residential lot, regardless if it's a basin or not, and I would just defer to Sherri. Obviously, that's structure, that one building is, you know, 20 feet off of the lot line, and the playground is 26 feet off the lot line, but the balance of that property line should maintain a buffer as well.
From the playground north?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we could do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It seems that we gave some direction to the applicant when they first appeared. Other than this buffer issue, it seems that they've done everything we kind of gave them direction to do.
Correct.
Yeah, we're almost done.
But we have to put it on the record.
There's one last item, and that has to do, we're asking for a parking technical waiver, a couple of technical waivers, if I may just finish that up real quick. Typically, on subdivisions, the board asks that we look at curb and sidewalk. I would point out that we're asking for no curb and sidewalk along the two proposed lots, as the entire Woodland, Rustic, and Crest Drive frontages of the properties in that subdivision have no curbs and no sidewalks. So curbs and sidewalks would really not be in keeping with them, and they really wouldn't go anywhere or connect to anything, so we're asking for that waiver. And the second waiver is, the parking lot is an existing 81-space parking lot. As requested, the spaces have been shown on the plan, and they will be remarked as part of anything that's done with the church plans on doing that anyway. When you look at the technical standards for the requirements in your ordinance, they require one space for three seats for house of worship, one space for 300 square feet for the parish hall, and 1.2 per classroom, and when you add all that up in the education building, it comes out to 100, and there's 81. But the point is, is that the church use and the school use would never occur at the same time. The church is weekend and some weekday evenings, whereas the school is 7:30 to 4:30 on weekdays. Secondly, the parish hall is typically used in conjunction with the church, and the same vehicles and parking that occurs for the church would typically be associated with the parish hall. They work together.
They will never, they usually never work simultaneously.
Not with the bulk use at the same time. People from the church will go to the parish hall for a repast or something like that. And then, other house of worship, this basically goes in what I just said, the other house of worship applications we have done included separate parish halls, didn't take, it's one per three spaces for the house of worship, the parish hall didn't typically include other burdensome parking. So when you add all that together, the 81 spaces have traditionally, and would continue to adequately serve the site. So I think on parking, we're okay as well, and we ask for that waiver.
Charles?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I take no exception to the testimony that Mike said. As he said, you know, the uses are not going to be during the same time, so you're not going to have, you know, 81 parking spaces needing to be used at the same time, so I take no exception to that. I think we did have a comment in there about providing an additional handicap parking stripe space just to meet the federal standards for the size lot that it is. You have no problem with doing that, Mike?
No, we will do that. It may result in the loss of a space or something, but I think we'll still be okay as far as a waiver, not a variance.
Okay. And then I just want to reiterate for the board, the applicant did get conceptual sewer approval from the township. They did say that they need to get final approval, so that it comes with designing, you know, the sewer main, proper slopes and all that. Also, it requires Manasquan River Regional Sewer Authority approval. That's important because these are undersized lots, lots that aren't served by public sewer, need to have a minimum lot area of 40,000 square feet, so, you know, if they don't get that approval for the township, they would have to come back to the board for additional variance approval for those undersized lots, so just want to make sure that that's on the record. Also, subject to getting New Jersey American Water Approval for the water services for those lots. And then the last piece of the puzzle, just getting an LOI to verify, obviously, you've done the lead work with Dubois, saying that there's no wetlands on the site, we just typical require LOI, just verifying that there's, you know, no wetlands on the site.
Charles, is any case you could recommend a waiver on the LOI formal, or we have to go to Trenton for that?
I don't know that we should do that, Mr. Chairman. Anytime that there's a thought of wetlands being on the site, even with environmental professionals saying that there's no wetlands on the site, we have typically required an LOI, just verifying that.
Well, it's usually, it's usually a requirement.
And just for the record, the DP has had communication with us over the last couple of years. That's ultimately what they want. They don't want permits being issued, they don't want development in an area that's mapped, and they, they don't necessarily trust, not that they don't trust a professional, but they want the LOI, and they've made that very clear to the township, that at my level, as well as the boards, we should be requiring LOIs, if, like Charlie said, there's any thought of wetlands.
My client asked me to ask, that's why I asked.
Yeah. And then, Mr. Chairman, just one last thing, I had a couple of plat requirements that are pretty self-explanatory in the letter. As long as the applicant agrees to address those, some of it was recalculating the lot and the building coverage, because the lot area of the church has now changed, so just recalculating that, clarifying in some of the tables, some of the setbacks just to match what's shown on the plans, minor stuff that I think is self-explanatory in the letter.
We don't have any issue with the plat details. The only thing we ask for relief on is the principal setbacks being depicted from the That is not a standard that I think is in the ordinance.
It is in the ordinance, and that's how we've been measuring.
What section is that from?
63.
63B?
Is the buffer section.
All right.
That's how we've been calculating buffers, that they measure off the setback line.
On residential lots?
No. Wouldn't that just be subject to church lots, though?
Yes, just to.
Just the church lot, Mike. So it's not going to impact the two residential lots, it's just for clarity on the church, on the church lot, from the 50-foot buffer.
And then the conditional use setbacks as well? Maybe 30 instead of 20?
It basically just says that the setback required is measured off the buffer, not off the lot line. So whatever the required setbacks are, they have to be measured off the buffer line. So, whatever the required setbacks are, they have to be measured off the buffer line. I don't think you're going to have a problem at all, because the buildings along those three, with the exception of the, the existing buildings that we talked about, the parish hall...
Yeah, that's the only one that they're going to have issue.
That's the only one that's going to create a problem. The rest of them are more than adequate distance away. It's just a matter of just showing it on the plan.
I understand that. Yeah, okay. Not worth arguing on this case, but it's, anyway, it's different than what the ordinance ripped, I mean, one, I don't want to beat it to death.
Just show it on the plan, that's all.
Okay. And the one last thing is, we're asking for the three signs, and some of your professionals mentioned the signs. So, I did want to address the signs, if I may.
Okay.
I have three exhibits.
We need to mark those?
Yes, you do.
Yes.
He's coming around. He's coming. Mark is coming.
There's one, there's three exhibits.
Where are we with the number?
A-15.
Mike, would you describe what A-15 is that is marking?
A-15 is a photo of the sign in front of the education building. It's actually a freestanding sign. A-15. Do you want to mark A-16? That's A-15?
Yes.
Okay. A-16 is a building-mounted sign on the Havenwood Montessori School. And then, A-17 is the freestanding sign in front of the Prince of Peace Church. It's a freestanding sign perpendicular with Aldrich Road.
So, Mike, just to clarify for the, and I know we're not really, that you agreed to show the, show the setback lines off of the buffer, but it's clear in Section 63B...
Yeah.
...that it shall be in addition to any land that's required under ordinance for the uses side and rear yard setback area. So, the buffer is in addition to. That's why the setbacks are measured off the buffer line.
I didn't want to beat this, but you're taking that out of context. It says, "The requirement of a permanent 50-foot wide buffer measured from the property line shall be provided by the applicant around all major subdivisions, and shall be in addition to any land area that is required under ordinance for uses aside and rear setback area for proposed residential lots."
Because you don't have sewer, it is a major subdivision.
Off-track improvement.
So, you have a major subdivision here, because you have an off-track improvement of the sewer. So, this is a major subdivision.
Okay.
No, I understand, but, but it is in her report.
Existing at this time, yes.
Okay.
Okay, on A-15, that's that blue sign, it's a general sign in front, it's a V-shaped sign, it's immediately in front of the education building. That sign is V-shaped, it has two 4-by-8 panels, and I am told, but they can't find the paperwork, that was previously approved. Having said that, the, what the, what the church would like to do is take the Haven's Wood sign, that's A-16, that's mounted on the Building Bannister, the yellow sign, and put that in that area in front of the site. That area, that sign is a 3-by-6 wood sign. And they'd like to put that 3-foot-by-6 sign in front of the education building, and it would read Havenwood Montessori School. The other sign is shown on the plan, actually. It's actually in front of the church, the house of worship. It's a perpendicular sign with Aldrich Road, and you can see what it is, it's Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, and it has some message, variable message there. That sign is 3 foot 9 by 6 inches, so 3 and 3/4, 18, 22 square feet or more or less. It's about 6 feet high, and they would like that stone, it has the stone pillars, the brick pillars. They would like that sign to remain for the church. And they would like the Havenwood sign on A-16 to replace the sign on A-15. And that's the proposal by the applicant.
Jim, that, that meets the square footage?
I don't know. So, this sign on A-15 is along the way?
Yes.
And this, just this sign is replacing it, what we see on A-16?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
What's the square footage of that?
According to Mike's, it's 72 total square feet. Is that about right?
No, the plywood is 4, no, the plywood is 64. It's 3 by 6, the one on the building. It's 18 square feet.
I mean, the, the bottom line is that they're technically in a residential zone, which we don't allow signage, so they would need relief for the signage. I take no exception to the, obviously, the Prince of Peace sign has been there, that's existing, and the reduction from the, like, the V-shaped shaped sign, that's kind of a freestanding sign, to the smaller...
Monastery.
Building-mounted sign. I would take no exception to the relief necessary for that signage.
Okay. Okay, so they, they do need variance relief, correct?
Correct, because it's a residential zone.
Okay.
Actually, Charlie summarized most of his report, and I don't have any issues. I think we've covered everything for you, Charlie. Mostly, everything else is plat detail-related, we agree to that. So, I think we're done. We've talked about it.
Jim?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, sir.
No. Okay. Mr. Kaplan?
Members of the board, that concludes our witnesses on this application.
Okay.
And we've asked for the reasons put forth, and reading all the conditions that the board grants the subdivision and the variances and waivers requested.
Okay. This time, let's open to the public. Can I have a motion to open the public?
Motion, open the public.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Massa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, anyone in the audience wish to come forward, ask question, or make a comment? Please come forward. Is there anyone? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Massa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Would you like to make a summation, or?
He did.
No, no, but is there any further from our professionals?
Nope.
Any further from the board?
No, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Move, motion by Mr. Massa, seconded by Mr. Orozco. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Based on all testimony that's been provided, the applicant moved forward by taking away two variances and undersized lots, which was very appreciative. It made it more in compliance where the board, all testimony that's been placed on the record, my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this moment, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll move into the next case.
The board will now recess. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, next case on the agenda, case number BA 1827, Euro Supply LTD DBA Stone Quest LLC. Use variance preliminary final site plan with ancillary bulk variance. Application of Euro Supply LTD DBA Stone Quest LLC as applicant, and 271 Adelphia LLC as owner seeking use variance in preliminary and final major site plan approval for ancillary bulk variance to construct a concrete block manufacturing plant, associated storage bins, gravel storage area, pole borne, two-storage building, circular driveway, stormwater management, ancillary improvements on premises known as Block 157, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 271 Adelphia Road. This application was originally scheduled for January 14th, 2019, when it was carried to February 25th, 2019, and on the 25th was carried to March 11th, 2019, with no further notice. After some testimony, March 11th, 2019, the application was carried to April 22nd, 2019, with no further notice. Expiration date, April 30th, 2019. Eligible voters, Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Saya, Moretti, and Nansen.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Don Cialfieri, on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman just stated, the board did give us a brief amount of time at the last hearing to provide some testimony. We showed you a short video of what the proposed use is going to be, and then additionally, we had Mr. Geller provide some engineering testimony to the site itself. At the previous hearing, we heard the board's comments, they had some questions with relation to the house that is on the lot as well, and you requested that the applicant remove the house. The applicant, at this time, is willing to do that as a condition of the approval. I'm going to have Mr. Geller come on and provide some more testimony, engineering and planning testimony, and I'm going to have him right now, just to give, give, give a general background of the site itself, the current existing structure, and then what we're looking to use it for.
Right, and Mr. Geller, you're previously sworn, so I'll remind you the same, and you may continue.
One correction, if I may. I'm looking at the exhibit that was marked, it was A-17 at the last hearing. I'll be referring to it. It's a color rendering of the site, and it's dated 2/25/19, and miniature copies were given out to the board members. Does anybody need that, or do you have them from last time?
I only had three. I don't know if you have any more?
Oh, I, I know you had the copies last time, but I have what's left over that you didn't give out. Anyway, I noticed on that, on the exhibit itself, it was marked B-17. It's really A-17.
A-17.
Can I make a change on that?
Yeah, you want to change it?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mertens. Yeah, but it was marked B. It was B on here, it's actually A.
Oh, I have it as A-17, so that's okay.
I just want it to be right.
Thank you.
For the record.
For the record.
Okay, last time when I was here, I did describe the site. I'm not sure what members were not here last time.
I was the only one that wasn't.
Okay, well, this site is at the...
I reviewed, I reviewed the testimony.
Okay, thank you.
To speed.
Very good, thank you very much. If you recall, this site was previously owned by the Harwood Company, and they had a foliage business there, and various other activities back through the years, and it's the factory building on the property that's existed probably for close, over 50 years. And there's also a dwelling, God bless you, dwelling in the Adelphia Road frontage of the property that existed about the same amount of time. In 2015, the applicant purchased this property from the Harwoods, and he moved his stone product, stone product manufacturing business. They make various products out of stone, quartz, limestone, countertops, cabinets, everything, you name it, they make it. And they have a 60,000-plus-square-foot commercial building on the property. Now, this is in the SED 1, Special Economic Development Zone. That was a overlay zone created by the township in 2013, and it's an overlay to the remainder of the surrounding area, which is ARE 2 zone. And that overlay zone allowed the uses that are permitted in the SED Special Economic Development Zone, but it was required to adhere to the ARE 2 bulk requirements, lot area, dimensions, setbacks, coverages, et cetera. So, some of our variances are associated with those lesser amounts, the required, for example, the allowable impervious coverage in the ARE zone is 15%, and the allowable building coverage in the ARE zone is 12%. But in the SED zone, the allowable impervious coverage is 70, 7-0%. So, that's a significant difference. So, there are variances for impervious lot coverage being requested here. I also would note that many of the variances and design waivers that are cited in your board professionals' reports are attributed to existing conditions. Some were attributed to the residential dwelling on the property, which complicates things, and the other was the existing conditions on the property, because it's an older site. They don't meet many of the current design standards of the town. I pointed that out last month as well. We talked about the adjacent uses. North across is residential in nature. Northeast of the site is the Girl Scout facility, the Equestrian facility, and there's a deli, that's the only non-conforming use northeast of the site. And east of the site is a site that's currently under construction. It's the Joseph Fazio Steel site. That's proposing a, a building, about 169,000-square-foot building, and it's a fabrication of steel products. That's what they do. It has a rear storage area fronting on Adelphia Road, and that's to the east of the site. And then, south across Squankham Yellow Brook from the site are various residential uses. There's one that contains some, multiple single-family uses on a single lot. Other than that, they're basically single-family uses. Now, this development calls for the construction of a concrete block manufacturing plant on the southeastally portion of the existing building. The plant would be comprised of the equipment, there would mostly be, 95% of it would be inside the building, and a little part of the equipment and the hoppers and silos are located outside the building.
How many of them, how many...
How many of them, how many silos?
Two.
Two, and how many hoppers?
One, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six hoppers?
Yes.
And that's raw material hoppers, correct?
Yeah, there's also larger storage bins, there are about four of them south of that, and that material is moved into the hoppers as needed to create the stone and course aggregate for the concrete products that they make.
Now, are the hoppers enclosed?
They're covered by an awning.
Just awning? They're still open masonry hoppers, correct?
The masonry, the hoppers are actually part of the building. I believe their masonry is.
Okay. The, the storage, raw material storage areas, how is that going to be contained?
They're contained, they will be contained in those block, large jersey block, they're about two-foot, the type of block they maintain, and can build them as high as needed. I believe they're proposed to be, I don't know if they're sixer, I can't answer that right now, but they're in hoppers that are composed of block material, and their dimensions, I can get the dimensions.
They're going to be jersey barriers, stacked barriers?
They're not jersey barriers because they have curves to them.
Right, they're going to be stacked concrete blocks, right?
Yes, and they're, their dimensions are 40, 20, approximately 24 by 40.
24 by 40, and there's four of those?
Four of those.
Okay, what type of materials are going to be stored in that?
That's where the coarse stones, sand, course aggregate would be stored in those, and the silos would store, two of them are needed, ones for white cement and ones for gray cement, depending on the product they're making.
Okay, so out of the four, that's going to be just stone and sand?
Yeah, but some various sized stone.
Okay.
That's why there's different sizes, different numbers needed. There would be a gravel storage area, which would be the storage area south of the existing building. There would be a stone gravel maneuvering area southeast of the building and the access off of Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. And there would be two 12,000-square-foot storage buildings for the storage of product as they're manufactured. Some product would go in, some would be stored outside, and some other, any motor vehicles that are associated with the use would be parked in those buildings in the evening. So there'd never be any motor vehicle parked on the gravel surfaces. I know that's a board concern. Those things would be parked inside the storage buildings.
Mike, is that inclusive of heavy equipment?
When you say heavy equipment, what do you mean?
So you, you need front-end loaders to load the stuff in the hoppers? Where, where's that going to park?
Yes, that would be inclusive of those.
That's going to go in a building?
I think that's a motor vehicle that has the opportunity.
Okay, so it's going to go in a building, okay.
Yes.
Now, the drive entrance, you said off of Squonkam Yellowbrook there?
Yeah, I was going to get to that.
But you, you said that's going to be gravel?
No, no, the first 50 feet is paved and curved, then it's gravel for the remainder. The same applies to the proposed access off of Adelphia Road, would be 50-foot paved and then gravel.
Do you have an objection to paving that whole drive aisle?
You're asking the wrong person.
But they, well, Mr. Cialfieri.
We would prefer not to at this time, because...
But the thing about it is, you're going to have tractor trailers, you're going to have dump trucks and everything else coming in and out, dumping. Gravel makes a lot of dust.
The, I mean, the, the amount of traffic generated from the site itself, I don't know if it would necessitate putting in an entire paved area, but we can discuss it with the client.
I'm just, just saying the drive aisles.
Just the drive aisle, like from Adelphia to Squonkam Yellowbrook?
Yes, that drive aisle.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yes, yeah, we'll do that. Let me continue with the use, okay? The use we're asserting is compatible with the existing stone manufacturing business. I want you to say the proposed hours of operation of this particular is 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Now, that's just the block manufacturing, correct?
I think that's all your hours.
Okay.
Monday through Saturday, but Saturday opening is seasonal, and then they're closed on Sundays. And there will be a maximum of 20 employees, and there's only one shift, and the intent, this is such a mechanical operation, that the existing employees will be utilized for operating the block. You saw the video, it's very, it's mechanical, it's all automated.
And all of that equipment's going to be interior, correct?
There's a small piece of the equipment that takes the combined material from the silos and the hopper, and then the rest of it is all inside the building.
Okay, are there any vibrators on the hoppers?
I don't know, there's, I don't know that.
Vibrators on the hoppers?
On the hoppers?
Yeah, it's, if, if he's going to testify, have him come forward. I think he was previously sworn, what?
I don't know, was he?
I don't know.
No. Come on.
Mr. Troply?
I don't think he was.
You swear a testament, you're here this evening, it can be the truth, the whole truth.
Yes, sir.
Can we have your name, please?
Joseph Morchik, M-O-R-C-H-I-K.
M-O-R?
C-H-I-K.
My, my question is, are there any vibrators on the hoppers?
No.
They, so...
They...
They're air entrained?
They come from hoppers by the conveyor inside.
I know, but the, but a lot of the concrete hoppers have vibrators on them.
No.
They vibrate to keep the material moving.
No, it's only inside.
But there are vibrators on the equipment?
Vibrators will be inside the building, not outside.
So the hoppers would not have any vibration?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. As I said, the, there's 30-foot-wide access drives proposed off of Squonkam Yellowbrook Road and continuing to Adelphia Road, and those will be gated, and they're paved for the first 50 feet. Actually, we're going to now pave the entire stretch through that road.
Thank you.
The adjacent areas would be gravel, though, as proposed. The gravel storage area are not proposed, they're not proposed to be curbed, so we're asking for a waiver on the curbing as well, and that would allow for, there's adequate drainage put in place in the drainage plan that intercepts all the water from gravel and impervious surfaces of the buildings and the driveway, and that's, system drains to a stormwater management basin in the southeastally portion of the property. That basin's been designed to accommodate the design flows for a 100-year storm. Any overflows or surcharges are directed to the county drainage system in Squonkam Yellowbrook Road, which drains north and then to the bridge under Adelphia Road.
Will that all be piped?
Everything is piped from the basin. It's piped to the drainage system in the county road, and then it's piped, actually all the way from the Fazio site, there's an existing system. That system is currently undergoing Monmouth County Planning Board review as part of their application.
Okay.
There'd be site landscaping proposed mainly along the frontages of the site. I would also offer, in addition to what's on the current plans, there's 50-foot buffers proposed along the entire frontage of the site, fronting on Squonkam Yellowbrook Road and Adelphia Road. There's currently not landscaping there now. You'll recall that there's roughly 1,046 feet of frontage on Adelphia Road and 1,557 feet of frontage on Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. So all of that will be buffered with a 50-foot buffer, and to extend the plantings that are shown on the plan, the plantings will be extended along Squonkam Yellowbrook Road to the signalized intersection with Adelphia, and then along Adelphia Road. The Adelphia Road plantings are proposed at grade, because the grade generally slopes from Adelphia Road down to Squonkam Road, and then Squonkam Yellowbrook Road is on a berm. So the Squonkam Yellowbrook Road plantings would be on a berm, the Adelphia Road are on a grade, because there's a level change there.
Mike, are you aware, I know we're talking about, are you aware of CME's letter from Sherry?
Yes, I'll be addressing that in a moment.
Okay.
We, we know it. I think she had asked for us to work with her on the...
And that's the letter dated February 22nd.
Correct.
Yes, if you want to address it now, I will.
Yeah, let's just address it.
Easy for you to say.
I know I'm taking you kind of out of your...
That's all right.
But I, while we're there, let's go ahead and address it.
No problem. Actually, number one, she points out that the applicant is providing trees on-site in excess of their tree replacement obligation, which is good. Number two, talks about the requirements for a variance for, or waivers for a required buffer between residential and commercial. With the re-elimination of the residents, it removes that need for a buffer, because the common line, easterly line, is between two commercial uses, and a buffer's not required.
Correct.
So two disappears. Waivers. B, parking areas is an existing condition. I was going to address all that, but a lot of the waivers associated with that are existing conditions, and in essence, with the extension of the buffer around the entire frontage, in essence, the parking areas are landscaped from the adjacent properties and public roads. She also noted that was an existing condition with no improvements proposed in this area. 188-186G in Section C, all areas between the parking and the building shall be landscaped. No landscaping is existing or proposed. Her office again notes it's an existing condition with no improvements in this area. D is a minimum of five-foot-tall screen is required around the perimeter of trash enclosures. No landscaping exists or has been proposed. She also notes that's an existing condition. I would point out, in that regard, we are proposing a fenced enclosure to the existing trash enclosure. In other words, there's a trash dumpster, it doesn't have an enclosure, we're just asking for a waiver on the planting because it's over a paved area.
Also, you would need a waiver because our ordinance requires block, not, not a fenced enclosure?
Is that an ordinance?
Am I correct?
I think we typically require block.
Right.
I don't think it spells it out, and I would, I would say the same thing for this. You're going to have a lot of heavy equipment on the property. I'd like to see a block enclosure.
Okay.
No, no objection.
Okay.
And E, 188-226E, parking lots exposed to the public view shall be surrounded by a minimum of a three-foot-high year-round visually impervious green hedge or wall. She again notes that's no existing conditions with no improvements proposed, but I believe the proposed buffer along the street frontages will meet that intent of the ordinance. And Section 188-226F, all off-street parking, loading, and service shall be separated from walkways, sidewalks, streets, or alleys, suitably landscaped, et cetera, et cetera. Our office notes this is an existing condition with no improvements proposed in this area. Again, I believe that landscaped frontage will meet that intent. So, and then number three, the technical comments, we have no objection to 3A through H in her report.
And you will work with her office?
Yes.
I mean, the only thing I will say is technically, they still need a variance for the buffer because there's a parking area that's in that 50-foot buffer along Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. But I think if they work with Sherry to, you know, extend the landscaping up towards the intersection and along the frontage on Adelphia Farmingdale Road, I think that they've gone a long way to meet the intent of the ordinance, but they still would require relief because the corner of that parking lot is in the buffer.
It's in there.
Right.
Right. So that, that would be a variance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Continuing, we're proposing chain link fencing, six-foot-high, along the entire Squonkam Yellowbrook Road frontage. That would be inside the plantings.
That'd be to...
And the Adelphia Road frontage.
That, that will be inside the plantings, correct?
Yes, it would match, actually match the, that's the way the Fazio site was approved, the same manner. It would match that corner and would proceed around inside the plantings, so the plantings would be on the outside of the fence.
It's commercial, so they can't have a six-foot...
We do need a variance there because we're proposing a six-foot-high fence, which is appropriate for a, a commercial site like this, but it is within the frontage. I think we need a variance from your ordinance for that.
Correct, because it's in the front yard setback, you're right, Matt. But it'll be internal to the landscaping, right? So it will not run along the property line?
That's right, it's inside the landscaping. Lighting, as it, this is a daytime operation. Nonetheless, the applicant is proposing lighting along that drive and security lighting on the two proposed 12,000-square-foot buildings. They would all be mounted less than 24-foot mounting height. There are actually seven pole-mounted lights and two, one, one of those pole-mounted lights address the lighting in the area of those buildings. But really, it's a daytime operation, and those lights can be set on timers.
Mike, is...
Will any raw material be brought in at night?
No.
After hours?
No.
Okay, all during day?
Mike, is there any existing lighting on the building for that storage area that you have, like to the south of the building? If I have my bearings correct? Is that going to be lit at all, or?
I don't think that's, I'm not sure if there's existing lights there. Squonkam Yellowbrook roadside.
He, he needs to come up and be on the mic, so it's on the record, please.
Come on down.
He can actually stay right here, and there's a mic on the table if you want.
Is there any lights on the southern side of the...
No.
No light?
No, no lights over there.
Okay.
And we're not proposing any lights.
Okay.
If it's necessary, we put the lights out.
We are asking for two freestanding site identification signs for this use. One would be at each end of that drive, which is gated, but they would identify those entrances for the stone block business, and as, as such, we need a variance because there's two signs. There's already an existing sign for the existing site on Adel, on the existing Adelphia Road driveway. That frontage would have two signs, we would ask for a variance for that. Now, these signs are proposed to be 16 square feet. They're relatively small, which is smaller than allowable in the SED Zone, and they'd be set at 20 feet from the right-of-way line. So other than there being the two signs, they meet the sign ordinance with no exception, except for the bottom elevation is three foot, seven inches, whereas the town requires seven-foot signs. So these are low-hanging signs, and they're outside the site triangles. So we don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan.
Mr. Moretti?
Yeah, the security lights, are they're going to be facing towards the building? Nothing's going to be going out towards the residence areas?
Well, we submit a lighting plan. There's no glare or overflow to the residence, and they can be shielded.
Mike, would you guys agree to a condition to have the lights put on, dimmers, or shut off completely one hour after ceasing operations for the day?
No exception to that.
And the whole site's going to be gated, correct?
Fenced and gated.
Okay.
And I would just point out, the storage buildings are not proposed to be served with sanitary sewer or water. Water for the proposed block plant, which is on a septic system, it's only for the employees, that will either come from the public water system or recycled water that he already uses for his stone operation. Now, I wanted to say some of the changes we've made to the plan, some of my, some of them I've already described. I talked about already that in response to the board comments and the professionals' comments, we've extended the 50-foot-wide buffer and planted along the entire frontage. That's a change from what you see on the plan right there. And that six-foot fence is now also provided around the entire frontage, as well as the sideline with Fazio, so that the entire site is now secure and enclosed. And we did, as we previously stated, the existing dumpster, which is in the northwesterly portion of the site, will be enclosed with a block enclosure.
Okay.
Now, this proposed block manufacturing plant is not a permitted, that's why we're here, actually. Well, other than the residence is now eliminated, but we're here because the block manufacturing plant is not a permitted use in the SED-1 or the SED Special Economic Zones, so we need a D1 variance for that. It is noted that the use for the manufacturing of stone, glass, clay, and products, concrete products, was permitted in both of those zones until a recent ordinance amendment in July of 2017, which deleted the manufacturing of concrete products. of 2017, which deleted the manufacturing of concrete products from the list of those permitted. And it added a prohibited use section, which prohibits the manufacturing of asphalt and concrete. And that's how it reads, manufacturing of asphalt and concrete. I'll address the D-one standards in a moment, but I wanted to point that out.
Mike, how, how tall are the silos?
They're a little less than thirty-three feet. I think they're thirty-two feet, ten and a half inches, but they're under thirty-three feet. The maximum allowed in this zone is thirty-five.
Okay.
The proposed site meets most of the bulk requirements of the SED one zone, which revert back to the ARE two bulk standard, to one exception is the impervious lot coverage. The maximum permitted in the ARE two zone, as I previously said, is only fifteen percent. The SED zone does permit seventy, seven-zero. In this case, the existing site, as it is today, has an impervious coverage of seventeen and a half percent, which already exceeds the ordinance allowance. And the proposed site would have an impervious coverage of twenty-one point seven percent. So we need a bulk variance for impervious coverage.
This'll go up, right? Now that you're extending the statement for the driveway?
Yes, it will.
That number will go up?
Yes, it will go up a little. I don't have that number immediately available.
If you can just, when you figure out how much area that is, if you could just let us know what the new coverage number would be?
Yeah. I can figure out if we take the short...
I think Ron's gonna need it for any kind of resolution.
Yes, thank you. I will do that. Um, the parking, I want to address the parking for a moment. The site would continue to utilize the existing parking. There's no, this is not a customer type of operation. This operation is related to their existing business. Their existing business has a parking area and there's a small retail show area for people to come in and look at stone, as allowed in the SED zone. But there's no parking physically being provided in this area because it's not that kind of operation. So continue to use the existing fifty-five space parking lot that exists for the existing business. The block plant doesn't require additional parking. So with respect to the parking provided on this site, the existing proposed uses are not typical manufacturing. When you take manufacturing out of your ordinance and look at parking, they look at requiring one space per, I think it's eight hundred square feet. And this is not that kind of use. If you applied that over the building, we'd need a lot more. So this, we're actually relying on the section of the ordinance, which is one eighty-eight dash one oh seven C one, which reads, where the minimum parking requirements are not set forth for a specific use in this schedule, the number of required parking spaces shall be determined by the reviewing agency at the time at which the application for development is submitted. So our site analysis that was on the plans is based on the number of employees, which has, there's twenty employees, there's five spaces for visitors, and we had included three spaces for the residents, but that's no longer needed. But the twenty-five or twenty-eight spaces versus the fifty-five, the applicant's feeling is that his parking is adequate and there's no necessary additional parking for this proposed operation. Per the ordinance, though, when you figure the one per eight hundred for the manufacturing building, we need seventy-six spaces. The two storage buildings at one per five thousand require another six spaces. And the required parking then becomes seventy-six plus six, which is eighty-two spaces required, fifty-five are required. So technically, we need a variance for parking because it's greater than a twenty percent deviation. As I, as I previously stated, parking as proposed and existing is adequate.
Charles, Mike, just, I want to clarify that. I think our office, we calculated fifty-six parking spaces as opposed to the fifty-five. So if you want to just clarify that for your testimony.
Okay.
And then as far as the use, I just want to clarify, so as far as retail coming in to see the showroom, it's all gonna be limited to inside the building, the footprint that's already set. There's not gonna be any expansion to the showroom or anything like that. And then the storage area outside the building, that's just gonna be for storage of products. You're not gonna have additional, you know, visitors coming into the back part of the site to look at any, you know, display areas or anything like that.
No, as they manufacture block, they need a place to store it until it gets sold or picked up.
Okay. I would take no exception to granting the relief of the parking based on, you know, no expansion of the use, you know, of the showroom in the front there.
Thank you.
The other, my other question, will the, the delivery of the stone and delivery of the block, will that be outside trucks coming in to pick up and take deliveries, or do they deliver themselves from this site?
We had that discussion. Actually, my last discussion with the applicant, he can confirm this, he was, as far as delivering block from this site to places that purchase block, block would be stored onsite, set on pallets and, or on flatbeds that they would keep onsite, but the motor vehicle aspect of the transportation would be an outside service.
Okay.
And he doesn't want to maintain those kinds of vehicles. He may have a few flatbeds, tongue twister, a few flatbeds, but not any of the tractors that haul them. As far as delivery, those would be sources of stone would come with outside trucks that come and drop off stone into the major hoppers, the storage bins, and they would store the product that way.
Okay.
Any other use, questions on the operation?
The other... Mike, I just have a question. With the fence between the two businesses, is that a shared fence or?
Actually, I think Fazio's fence is up. We would match his fence, so.
Of course, it'll be one right next to each other.
Yeah, he's right on the property line, more or less.
Okay. They're gonna share the fence.
Okay.
Um, and even though the buffers, I think they're still, we're still maintaining the planted screen, there were some screening plantings along the northern property line. I think they'll stay on the plan, nonetheless. As far as the D-one, I'd like to address the D-one variance for the concrete block plant, which is no longer a permitted use in this zone. I think I've talked about the history of the SED zoning. It was adopted in two thousand and two. It replaced and updated the prior industrial zone. In two thousand and thirteen, the SED one overlay zone was adopted and the adjacent site to the east was included, the Fazio site, as an overlay to the underlying ARE two zone. That implied the uses of the SED zone with the bulk requirements of the ARE two zone, which pose some difficulties if you're looking to develop SED-type property. So, and furthermore, up until July of two thousand and seventeen, both zones permitted the use for the manufacturing of stone, glass, clay and concrete products. In two thousand and seventeen, it was, the manufacturing of concrete products part was deleted from the list and included in a prohibited uses section, which addressed it, which stipulated the prohibition of the manufacturing of asphalt and concrete. Now, the deletion of the concrete and asphalt plants from the SED and SED one zones leaves there's really no zone in town to have that kind of oper, it's really forbidden in the township of Howell. It appears to have been earmarked to restricting concrete and asphalt batch plants, which the distinction of that versus what's proposed. What's proposed is a stone block manufacturing plant. You're bringing raw products in, you're manufacturing a stone product and you're storing it onsite. It's not very much different than what the applicant does in his stone fabrication business, where he brings in raw product and makes countertops and, and cabinets and things like that. A batch plant, on the contrary, concrete or asphalt, takes in raw material, makes very large batches of materials. Then there's a chain of either dump trucks for asphalt or concrete trucks for concrete that have to queue in line to get, pick up product and leave the site. So both the traffic nature of how the site is used and the batch and the magnitude of the operation of producing the material versus producing block material, which is small and stored on pallets, is very different. Having said that, I believe that was the aim of the prohibition in the ordinance and that this particular use as a concrete block plant doesn't fall very far short from what's allowed, which is the manufact... the manufacturing of stone, glass, clay products is permitted in the SED zone. So this is really a stone product. It's a little bit above and beyond. So we don't argue that we need a use variance, but I want the board to understand the distinction of concrete block manufacturing versus the batch, batch bulk manufacturing of concrete.
It's still a concrete product.
Yeah, it is. It's a lot different than mass concrete, batch plant.
I know, but it's still a con, concrete manufacturing.
Okay. The history of this use of this property, this particular property, has been industrial for a very long time. And the property's been used as such since its construction. And prior to the elimination of this residential building, it was a mixed use. The latest use is a stone product manufacturing business was permitted to occupy the site in two thousand and fifteen. The multiple use aspect is being eliminated with the removal of the residence. Why is this site particularly suited for the proposed use? One, it's been historically used as an industrial use. It has historically, since two thousand and fifteen, been used for the production of stone product manufacturing, which is a permitted use in both SED one and SED zones. Up until two thousand and seventeen, the proposed use was a permitted use. The site's located at the intersection, signalized intersection of two primary county roads. One of the goals of the SED zone, SED Z one, SED zone, is to provide for a variety of economic development opportunities in areas of the township where rail and highway infrastructure are readily available. That same purpose was carried forward to the SED one zone. And the ordinance continues to cite the same permitted uses and goals in both zones. I believe this site also advances the purposes of zoning because the approval of this use would advance the purpose of providing a sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses. There is essentially no other zone than the SED or SED one that would allow any kind of stone product manufacturing. The proposed use is compatible with what's going on in the building right now. And keep in mind that ninety-five percent of the block production is really inside the building. So it's really a continuation of that same use. And we also, I think we advanced the purpose of light air and open space. I would say for this seventeen and a half acre site, that there's more than adequate area to provide light air and open space around the proposed uses such that it can't be deemed as intense. And I believe for a D-one, we also need an enhanced quality of proof that demonstrates that the granting of the use variance sought is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan and zone ordinance and the proof that reconciles the proposed variance with the zoning ordinance omission for the use from those permitted in the zone. As I said, the goals of the SED zone are to allow for economic development where rail and highway infrastructure are readily available. These roads lead to the main primary arterials from Squawkam, Yellowbrook Road, you get to one ninety-five, Adelphia Road out to Route nine. So these are primary arterial roads that meet that, that goal of the ordinance. The use was a permitted use until July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and despite the fact that the proposed use was deleted from the permitted uses, I believe it's very close and compatible with the existing stone production that takes place on the site. I believe also, based on the negative criteria, that the use can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good. That is, it's a use of a modern, environmentally sound, concrete block plant. It's not a concrete batch plant and the environmental considerations that are associated with that type of use. Not the associated truck traffic associated with that type of use. The industrial use existed at this site for many years. The site's adjacent to another industrial use in the SED one zone. Project will provide stormwater management for the site, which does not currently exist. The site will, the project will provide buffers along the frontage of the property, which do not currently exist. There will be no traffic detriments and it would not be a nuisance to the area. So, and we also say it would pose no detriment to the zone plan. Um, that concludes my D-one. I'd like to address the ARE two bulk requirement for impervious coverage, if I may. Impervious lot coverage is fifteen percent permitted, seventeen and a half percent is existing. Let me just take, if I have one brief second, I'll compute the additional thing.
Okay. That way he can do his calculations.
The board will now recess. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Yes, so Mr. Geller just provided, he just did some calculations, so we're gonna touch on the impervious coverage, the increase.
Yeah, thank you, Dante. The length of road between the paved portion from Adelphia to the paved portion off of Squawkam, Yellowbrook is seven hundred and forty-five feet, more or less. It's thirty feet wide, that's twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty square feet. That accounts for about two-point-nine-three percent of the lot. We all already, we're at twenty-one point seven. That would make the proposed coverage twenty-four point six. So I would say it's gonna be under twenty-five percent, because I didn't really do it exact. I did a kind of length by width. So it's gonna be under twenty-five percent, whereas fifteen is allowed and seventy percent is allowed in the SED zones. The warrants for this use variance is that the SED zone was created with the ARE two underlay, which poses a hardship for any kind of commercial development. There are no, strike that. As previously noted, the difference between the SED allowance of seventy percent and the ARE two allowance of fifteen percent is quite substantial. The existing lot coverage is seventeen and a half, and with the paving of the road, wait a minute, the proposed lot coverage would be approximately twenty-five percent. And we assert that these are relatively de minimis for the type of use and only approximately, approximately one-third of the seventy percent allowed in the SED zones. As I previously said, the ARE two bulk standards are not typical of the coverage for non-residential zones. In Howell Township, the maximum permitted impervious coverage for the NC, that's neighborhood commercial, highway commercial, highway development one, highway development two, highway development three, and the SED zones is all seventy percent. This would be the only zone that allows less than that for non-residential development. The purpose of the SED zone cited in one eighty-eight dash seventy-nine A is to provide a variety of economic development opportunities in areas of the township where rail and highway infrastructure are readily available. The ordinance continues to cite the same permitted uses, but there are no citations to bulk standards that particularly direct you to the ARE two. Nonetheless, we feel that the fifteen percent is a little bit low. The SED zones allow something substantially higher and the twenty-five percent is a appropriate variance for this. There are stormwater management provisions, which are addressing the impervious coverage, and the deviation in the maximum allowed are being handled by the additional runoff by the, from impervious and all developed areas being directed to the stormwater management basin. And I would point out that the Jason Fazio site was granted a bulk variance for impervious lot coverage, very similar to this, and their coverage at that time was about twenty-three and a half percent approved. And it was increased because there was allowance to pave some of the right road there, so that twenty-three and a half percent was allowed after the approval. Having said that, we feel that this is a C-two criteria, that the purposes of the act are advanced. I think we're meeting the proposed use of SED zone with a non-residential use. It's a special economic developed zone and it requires a little bit more maximum impervious coverage than is typically seen for residential type ARE two properties. than is typically seen for residential type ARE2 properties. The design of the site respects all environmental requirements having to do with runoff associated with impervious areas. And the site, despite the impervious coverage, has adequate setbacks and provides adequate light air and open space. The site, I believe, meets the advancements of the purpose of zoning and the economic development zone. And we don't see any detriment to the neighborhood or public good by the granting of the impervious lot coverage variance.
Mike, real quick, two questions. Did you take in consideration the residential abandonment for the impervious coverage being reduced?
I did not. So that will work to our advantage when we actually compute it. Yes, thank you.
Okay, is, is there driveway, is that a separate driveway from, or do they use a common driveway?
No, they actually exist off the existing driveway right there. So, that, that will be removed from the impervious lot coverage.
Okay.
I would point out that there were various citations in the Board Professionals' reports that address variance requirements from Section 188-63 buffers. And I believe with the elimination of the existing residential dwelling, these buffer variances are no longer applicable as there will be 50-foot planted around the entire periphery of the frontage. And there's not a buffer required between the two commercial sites. Am I okay with that?
No, because there's a corner of your parking lot that's in the buffer. It's not just structures, it's anything. You can't have grading, you can't have anything. Basically, your access, that's it.
Okay.
So technically, they still need the relief. But I think that the provision of that, you know, extending that landscaping more than meets the intent of what is required. And, and also take into consideration, our ordinance requires the buffer even if the residential use is across the street. But you have the 50 feet, then you have the road before you even get to the residential development on the other side. So I would take no exception if the board were to act favorably on that relief. But you technically still do need relief from that requirement.
We're talking the bottom little corner.
That little triangle, that's it.
Okay.
Because before, if you needed, if they needed the, when the house was there, they needed it along that easterly property line. And as you get down, the basin is within that 50 feet. But by removing the house, that requirement goes away because we don't buffer commercial to commercial.
Correct.
So that, that is, that portion of it is gone. It's just that little corner.
Right.
And I think that the provision of landscaping along the considerable frontage is, you know, far outweighs, you know, the benefit of that, far outweighs the detriment of that little corner of the parking lot.
And then I also realize, I spoke with Matt, the septic is an exception in the buffer.
Yes.
Okay, my question to you, Mike, would it be possible to apply for sewer hookup?
Uh, it would not be possible only because our preliminary approval from the township strictly stated that the residence was permitted to be connected, but the industrial use was not in the sewer service area.
I know, but can you just try? It, it's not gonna be, uh, based on approval, you know, it's not gonna be a condition of approval. But if you could get the business on sewer, I'd, I'd like to see you try.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add on that too.
Yes.
In Monmouth County Board of Health, they reviewed the application under the guise that the site was going to be serviced by public sanitary sewer. So they didn't review the septic system to make sure it can handle the additional concrete manufacturing block use. So I think that the applicant should be required to at least try to get the approvals to connect to the public sewer. If it turns out that they can't, then it would be subject to Monmouth County Board of Health. You know, that the expansion of the use can be handled by the existing septic system where they either gotta expand the septic to, to accommodate it.
Mr. Alferi, you have objection to that?
No objection.
Okay. Thank you, Charles. Okay, Mike.
In, in Bill Nunzietto's letter of October 22nd, just to address the sewer issue, I, we'll look into it, but on page three, he notes, "Special note, based on the wastewater management plan, Lot 1", and that's a small corner of the property near Adelphia and Squonkham Yellowbrook Road intersection. Lot 1 is the only lot located in the sewer service area. All of the proposed buildings are located in the non-sewer service area. The proposed structures are for storage use only. He looked at the proposed storage buildings. No sanitary sewer service is proposed. Any changes to the use of the structures may require a revised application. So there's no change of use to, that stipulates, there's the same number of employees. We'll look into it, but I don't think.
Yeah, they, it's not gonna, it's not part of a condition, but, you know, just look into it, see if you can't. If you can't, you know, then, then you have to go through the approvals in Monmouth County.
No problem.
If the township tells them no, then they gotta go to Monmouth County. Like I said, Monmouth County didn't review the septic system for the proposed use. So they'd have to get that out.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to derail your testimony.
We had been cited for a bulk variance for a side yard for the proposed 12,000 square foot buildings, but in that, there's no buffer required there any longer. Uh, that's no longer a variance, so I would strike that from the Board Professionals' reports. Thank you. Uh, we addressed the parking variance already, and we'll note that there's 56 existing spaces. But I believe your engineer and planner were satisfied with the parking analysis. And the last variance I wanted to talk about is noted in B1F of the Board Engineer's Letter. And comment, I think it's 5G of the Planner's Letter. A variance is technically required from Section 188-79.1B2A, which requires outdoor storage to be located within a screened rear yard area. And that really refers to the proposed storage associated with the block plant is in a front and partly a side yard. Because of this lot, has a very unusual configuration. It's basically a peninsula, if you look at it. And it's all road frontage for probably more than three-quarters of its perimeter. And it has one lot line, so it really has all frontages and then one sideline. So there's really no rear yard in this lot. It poses a technical difficulty. And due to the fact it's a uniquely shaped corner lot with no rear yard, and it has two large side frontages, side frontages and one side yard, it poses a hardship. And as such, I believe a C1 hardship exists that warrants this variance, which by the way, was also approved for the Fazio site because that site went from road to road and had basically two front yards and two side yards. And the planning board at that time approved the same variance for a storage area in a, not, what's not a front, a rear yard. So having said that, we believe that's an appropriate variance. And the warrants are there under the C1 proofs for hardship being a uniquely shaped property.
Jim?
I agree. They don't have a rear yard, so it's physically impossible for them to comply with this requirement because they have two fronts and a side. And I would take no exception to, um, where the outdoor storage is located. You know, they are providing a perimeter buffer around basically the entire street frontage. And the buffer that's along Squonkham Yellowbrook is on a berm. So you're not really gonna see it anyway. I guess, one question I have, which was in our letter, is what is the height of the storage bins? They're bins.
Sorry. What item was that in your letter, Jen? What item?
Uh, it's under seven, um, it's on page nine, D, 7D.
And we, uh, just so the board knows, we do have Mr. Kennel here to provide traffic testimony if the board is inclined to, to need any.
I think we had asked for a couple of things from him, as for circulation.
You know, I did not find a detail in our plans, and in. Talk, I didn't find a detail in our plans, but in talking to the applicant. And typical, we'll put, make them approximately 10 feet high.
Now, is that the top of the canopy?
No, that's the top of the block.
Okay, so how much higher would the canopy be?
It may have a nominal front-to-back slope, like a, like a lean-to type of structure. And 24 feet, I'd say that's gonna be about, um, 15 feet for the uppermost.
And then that's gonna match to the building?
Yes.
And Mike, while we're talking about that, can you just tell me how high the two one-story storage buildings are? Like what the height is?
Is that to the peak of the roof?
That's just the 26. Okay. I believe this was submitted with the application. There's a metal storage building.
Wanna mark that in, say, exhibit?
Yes, we can.
It might be in this A11. Hold on one second.
Yeah, it might be in A11.
Is it this building, Mike?
Mr. O'Callaghan.
Mr. Maslow here.
The last page, if you can.
No, this is the, uh, it's A11.
Look here, these are all berms.
I don't know what that is.
You're not gonna see that. Will be planted berms.
Yeah, that's it. The height of that building is 26 feet to the eve, and to the ridge is about 28 feet.
Thank you, Dante.
So it averages about 27 feet.
What'd you say, 28 feet, Mike?
28 to the ridge, 26 to the eve. So the average height is 27. And the required setback is the height, so we're at 50, which we're okay.
Mike, real quick, um, there was a lot of discussion about the change in the impervious coverage. You'd agree to work with our office for the stormwater basin just to revise all your calculations? And if the footprint of the basin does need to be expanded, that it won't impinge on any of the setbacks or the buffers or anything like that?
Uh, yes, we would. And we saw that comment in your letter, and we do agree with the drainage and grading comments in your letter.
Okay, thanks.
Also, Mike, what's the height of the raw material storage areas?
The block, the bins?
Yeah, the bin, not, not the bins behind the building, the, the storage for the raw material, the four storage areas.
That's what we're talking about. Those bins are 10-foot-high block. And, um, I believe there's warnings over there.
Now, is, is that the bins behind the building?
Oh, no, those are the bins southeast of the building, the four bins that are 24.
Okay, so those are 10-foot-high block?
Yes.
Well, what's the concrete?
10-foot-high is the height to the top of the block.
Okay, and then there's gonna be a, that's gonna be covered?
I don't believe that is covered. No.
Sir?
That's not covered. No.
Okay, so what I'm, Jim, which, which areas were you talking about?
Those bins.
The four, the four storage bins?
Yes.
Not the rear of the building?
Well, the tenant asked for both, the height of the outdoor storage bank and the canopy. So he said that the outdoor storage bin for 10 feet and then the canopy.
Well, the canopy's not over that, it's over the ones at bill. Okay, that, that's what I was trying to clarify. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Ready? So now, now before we get into the Professionals' reports, I just wanna bring you back and just so we can kinda discuss the, the proposed use again and the type of blocks or bricks that are gonna be created.
Okay.
When we were here last, we did bring in physical bricks that you could take a look at. Now, you wouldn't say those were concrete in nature, they were more brick-esque?
We've been saying concrete block, but my, my client insists on calling them concrete bricks. It's the production of those various-sized materials. And they're used with a polished, if you remember, they had a polished face to them. And they're more for the exterior finishing of structures as opposed to the traditional concrete building blocks or the basin blocks that you see that are eight by eight by 16. These are variable sizes, but they're more of a finished product. It's a specialty product. It's not just concrete block like you would see a, a block plant manufacturer, it's finishing block. So he keeps calling it finishing bricks, and there's a slight distinction there. And in my prior testimony, I, I tried to make the distinction of manufacturing those types of products as opposed to manufacturing bulk loose liquid, which is essentially liquid concrete that struck to various sites. And the distinction between those project, those two products are fairly significant in my eye.
And then the proposed use is very closely tied to the current operation, which is a stone cutting and manufacturing business?
Yes.
Where they create finished products for interior and exterior?
I would offer that almost all of their product that they finish and sell are finished products as opposed to bulk building products. They're not structural.
And then additionally, before we get, and then the last part before we get into the reports, just wanna touch on the stormwater management plan. What, what's being proposed is going to adequately address any potential overflow into adjacent sites?
Yes, the, the site takes all the water draining, the site drains from a northerly to southerly direction and takes all of the water from the developed area of the site and dr- and pipes it along the driveway that's now gonna be gravel. And off of the gravel that's adjacent to Squonkham Yellowbrook Road, pipes it to that basin. We've calculated it for the 100-year storm. Uh, Mr. Conliffe has asked for us to make certain revisions, which we'll make. There's adequate room if that basin needs to be enlarged in a northerly direction or deepened. It can be. And we'll look into that and work out those revisions. But basically, we're offering that it does manage the site. There's a spillway, there's also a piped outflow. And there's a spillway that directs it to the gutter of the road and the drainage system along Squonkham Yellowbrook Road, the existing county drainage system.
All right, thank you. Now, let's, let's get into the Professionals' reports. I wanna start with Jen's report dated February 22nd.
Mr. Chair, if, if I might?
Yes.
I think that, um, Mr. Geller has already addressed everything in my letter. I mean, we basically had asked questions throughout the course of the testimony. And I've been checking things off, and there's nothing outstanding that I have left.
Thank you.
Welcome.
If there wasn't, do you?
I'd let you know.
I know. You agree to address those?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, same comment for mine. Bulk of my items are stormwater concerns. Mike's agreed that the applicant will address those. And then, uh, we just had some stuff listed in the plat. And I just say, obviously, that you gotta comply with that as well.
I think we looked through that and we're okay with all of that, too.
Any questions from the board so far? Yes, sir?
I just wanna clarify the, again, the, the block or the brick that's being made. So these aren't like construction blocks, these are finishing bricks?
They had like, the applicant, maybe he's under oath, he can finish, explain better. But they're finished surfaces, so they're used on the exterior for decoration. They're not structural block as you think of with building block.
Yeah, but Mike, is it a concrete product, though, that makes these?
Yeah, we're not arguing that it's a concrete.
No, I, I understand, but I, I don't wanna differentiate from the, is still a concrete product. And that's what we have to address.
Yes, it is a concrete product.
Okay, they, I, I don't wanna confuse the board because I know that, the, the, what they're doing on site now is a stone product. You know, they cut and face stone. what they're doing on site now is a stone product, you know, they cut and face stone, I, I understand that, but strictly as of 2017, no concrete products can be manufactured, or any type of concrete product. So, the, the board, we're, we're here to address that D1 variance, and that's, that's what we need to stay focused on. I, I know that there's split-faced stone blocks and stuff that's made, but it's still a concrete product.
And we're not arguing that it's not, it is concrete, and I just wanted to point out the distinctions to the board between this and batch plans.
I, I understand.
Further, the similarity and compatibility of this product to the many other products that he already does on site.
I understand.
Yeah, I, Mike, I think what the chairman's just getting at is, when, it's not a brick product, if it was a brick product, you'd have a kiln, and there'd be some heating to it, it's, it's just concrete, so I just want to clarify it for the rest of the members.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I understand, I just wanted, I was thinking more in the trucking aspect of, you know, like, building materials and things like that.
It's still going to have the same weights.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Alfieri, want to...
Nothing further from Mr. Geller, um, as you stated, you wanted to have, uh, Mr. Kennel come up and provide some testimony?
Yeah, just briefly, as far as traffic circulation, you know, I, I think we had requested that at the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Right there.
Sir, the testimony you give this evening, you've returned the whole truth, nothing but to yourself, Ken.
I do. K-E-N-N-E-L, McDonough and Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan.
Dante, you want to qualify, Scott, although he's been here many, many times?
Yeah, I've, I've, yes, I'm, I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, with over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience, I've appeared before this board on many occasions, as well as in over 100 municipalities and over 1,000 site plan applications.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you. And I'll, and I'll be brief, uh, our office prepared a traffic report, it was dated February 6th, 2019, we analyzed the site driveways, we analyzed 524A and 524, it's currently operating at level service B, it will consider, continue to operate at level service B after this project is completed, if it's approved by the board. As far as onsite circulation, uh, Mr. Geller has testified that as far as the main parking field, the traffic activity associated with that will be similar to what is, exists today, and then the new driveways will accommodate the additional trucks that'll import material, and as well as exporting, and we were looking at as many as three, three trucks a day importing material, and a maximum of five trucks exporting material on a day, throughout the course of the day. So based on that level of traffic, um, again, the driveways will operate at great levels of service, there's great sightlines, so operate safely and efficiently, and be minimal impact as a result of this proposal.
Okay, so the, the main, main traffic of the whole site is, is probably employee, employee vehicle or traffic?
Employees and any visitors to the site that may be vendors or distributors that are deal with, again, this is not a general retail or general public type of, uh, use, it's really caters toward the contractors, distributors, and vendors, so it's a minimal activity during the course of the day, and based on our observations, there were anywhere from 20 to 21 vehicles parked on site at any ti- any, multiple times was at this site, so again, the, the, the number of vehicles parked on site, uh, is indicative of the low traffic generation from, uh, this type of use.
Okay. Professionals?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so Mike had said earlier that there was not going to be any additional employees for the use, whatever they have currently for the site was going to be able to operate the concrete facility, is that still the case, or?
Well, again, there is, um, my calculations are based on 15 employees, they may have a maximum of 20 employees.
Okay.
So again, the traffic projections took into consideration as if there are five new employees, that doesn't occur.
So that's in that total 20 that he testified too early, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Charles, did your office receive the traffic report?
Uh, yes, we did.
Well, did the traffic engineer kind of go over it?
We reviewed it very, um, quickly, um, obviously, Mr. Kennel cited, there's a level of service B, there's no change in the level of service B at the intersection there, um, you know, I think, um, based on the minimal additional traffic generated from the site, um, you know, is, is evidenced by the no change in level of service of the intersection there, um, you know, I, I don't think they took any exception to any of the findings in Mr. Kennel's report.
Okay, and also noted that that is a traffic light, that, that's a, there's a light at that?
Yeah, it's a signalized intersection, yes, correct.
And also to your, also just further, we also included the future traffic from the Fazio site right next door in our future traffic projection, so we took that into consideration.
Okay. Any other questions from the, Jen? Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alfieri?
At this time, we have no further testimony.
Any further comments from our professionals? Board members, any comment? Okay, I'll take a motion to open the public for questions and comments.
Motion open to public.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell for questions and comments?
Yes.
Okay, secondary by Mr. Massa?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, anyone in the audience wish to come forward, please come forward, be sworn in, uh, just one at a time. And this is for questions and comments.
I do.
Use the mic, please.
Alfred Caffiero. C-A-F-I-E-R-O.
And this is for questions of the applicant's witnesses or comments?
And your address, sir?
Yes.
I'm sorry, your address?
787 Squankham Yellowbrook Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have these to pass out, can I bring them over here?
If you would just give one to Mr. Alfieri, I assume you're going to, um, these are questions, or is this your test, uh?
These are...
What is it exactly?
They are paperwork on silica, and a testimony from somebody else, and I also have a flash drive that I would like to have everybody look at.
Uh, what, what is, okay, the, the testimony, what is this reference? I, I don't know if we can permit it into, on the record.
Well, there's only one at the end, basically it explains the hazards of silica.
Well, you can, you can get that in as your testimony, you know, you can put that on the record, if you wish.
Well, what's on this disc?
That's what we'd like to know, yes.
Okay, it is a video of what they played last time, but with sound, so you can hear how noisy it is, and also the hazards of silica, also my backyard where I have a brook that overflows, and I'm concerned about all the water that's going to be going from the other factory and this factory. These are pit, these are pictures on here that can show the board what I'm talking about, so I think it's important for everybody to see.
Mr. Tropley, that's, I'm going to let you comment.
Mr. Alfieri, um, I don't know what this flash drive is, um, how long is it, sir? How many, how many minutes? Pardon me?
Is it pictures or videos?
There's nine pictures and two videos, both of them are a minute and a half.
Mr. Chair, I, I recommend you permit it, I mean, if Mr. Alfieri wants to comment on it, um, I don't know what it is, I mean, I'm a little reluctant to not let the gentleman show this material.
No, I, I am too, but I want you to make the legal determination here.
Right, well, so, did you indicate, sir, that you had testimony from someone else, or did I misunderstand you?
That's in this packet, that somebody wrote a letter?
I, I can't accept that, okay?
We can't accept what you say, of course.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to...
I understand.
Voice my opinion on what's going on here.
Okay.
I live directly across from this factory.
Okay.
Can we, can I straighten up one thing first, though?
Sure.
Before you give your opinion, I think it might be cleaner if you would ask questions of the witnesses, and then when you're finished with your questions, then you can go into your opinions, how would that be?
Sure.
If you, if you have questions of Mr. Alfieri's witnesses?
Well, my questions are, like I stated before, I'm concerned about, um, the bins and the silica that can be in the air, how is it put into the hoppers? Judging from, uh, like I said, I've, I've been there for 29 years, and the prior owners have been very neat neighbors, and up until Stone Quest has come in, it's gone downhill, there's, uh, boulders on there, there's flags, it's not a good neighbor, so I'm trying to show that, uh, he won't be as responsible on all the things that are going in here as far as the concrete and maintenance of everything, how everything looks, to all the residents that are around here, and a lot of them are here tonight. So, you know, this is a big, a big thing for people that live there, and I'm sure if any of you lived across the street, you'd be up in arms if this was coming to your neighborhood.
Okay.
I mean, they're all, they're only pictures.
If you would prefer to just show the flash drive, that's fine, I'd like, I'm just trying to keep the record clear, if you have a particular question, ask it, if not, then, you know, I'll...
Well, I like to explain, explain as I go along, I mean, this the first time I'm doing this?
Why don't we, we'll get you started with, you got to bring the flash drive over here, though, for this gentleman. And Mr. Alfieri, I just...
If you have an objection, just...
I have an objection to the use of it, but I understand that the board wants to accept it. I just have one question, who prepared the flash drive?
I did.
You did?
You created, you, you took the pictures and the videos?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't take the videos, the videos I got online, like I mentioned before, it was the same video they showed, but mysteriously without sound. This shows the sound and how noisy it is.
We didn't have sound, we didn't, we can't control the sound.
I don't know if we have sound.
The sound, it was from...
I, I don't think we'll have sound either.
Well, why don't we show the whole video?
Okay, just show it.
This way. We'll see what there is.
Uh, where it says one, just goes online. And just to allay any concerns about sound, if there is sound, we do have our flash drive, we can show it again with the sound, it wasn't our intent to hide any sound.
I don't think there is sound.
I don't think we have the capability of sound.
Well, that, that's a big issue, because this is a very noisy machinery.
Again, the, the operation is inside the building.
I don't think the board understood, you know, how noisy that can be. That's the brook behind my house on a normal day. That's a view of the garage that's behind, uh, my house, is it detached garage? That's after two days of heavy rain. Same picture. That's my backyard. That's Hurricane Irene, where the garage was flooded up to three feet of water, and cost me $10,000 worth of tools. So you can see my concern about the brook and the water that's going from the new factory down the street and this factory also. I don't know how they determine it, but I know from being there 29 years, the water has gone up every time it rains hard, water has nowhere to go.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject here and shed some light on this, so, um, you know, if this application were 30 years ago, the stormwater standards that governed in the state of New Jersey were a lot different, um, there wasn't requirements to, uh, regulate the flow coming out of your site, a lot of times you could just put a pipe in daylight or flare, or flared end section daylight to a creek. Nowadays, the current DEP standards require you to reduce the peak flows for the various storm events, to try to mitigate those increase in runoff, they also require you just store the different stormwater volumes associated with those various storms, um, you know, what the applicant has provided, and they've agreed to do, is to provide revised calculations showing for these additional increased impervious areas, that they're going to meet all these reductions, um, you know, as far as impacts to the brook, um, you know, if the board were so inclined, they could require the applicant to do a, you know, a downstream analysis to show that there's no negative impacts, um, they are tying into an existing county system, so it's not like it's over a land flow, um, where it's going to be running down, uh, people's frontages or anything like that, but as far as the DEP requirements for their site, um, they are currently complying, and they've agreed to comply with this additional paved area with the driveway and everything like that, so, um, you know, I think they've done what they are required to do with their sites per the current DEP standards for stormwater management.
To say, kind of address...
Yeah, well, that's, my next issue is the amount of, uh, ground being covered by asphalt, which would add more water to the area?
I think Charles just addressed that.
Yeah, but that, isn't that part of the variance that they're asking for?
No, sir.
They, they...
It's the impervious coverage, yes, I, I agree, but they've, they've agreed to, to meet that calculation in increase, i- it need be to increase their stormwater basin.
With the state stormwater standards, anytime you're adding over a quarter acre of new impervious or one acre of total disturbance on a site, you're required to, it's a major development, you're required to meet the state stormwater standards for peak rate reductions, uh, um, total suspended solids removals, um, stormwater volumes for the different storm events, what they've provided is in compliance with that, they're adding some additional impervious areas as the board requested for the driveway, they've agreed that they're going to, you know, revise the calculations, and if needed, expand the basin to provide additional volume and additional rate reduction, um, they're meeting the state standards, so that's what governs in the township, it's the state ordinance, and it's also incorporated in the township ordinance, um, you know, like I said, if the board were so inclined to require some additional downstream analysis, they certainly could do that, but as far as the state standards with the onsite runoff, um, the applicant is meeting those, uh, you know, all the, um, requirements of the ordinance.
The other thing is important to note, that existing, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the existing condition is there is no basin on this property.
Correct.
Now, with this expansion, they're actually creating a detention basin to hold the water, and the water runs away from Adelphia Farmingdale Road, so it runs away from where your property is, towards like the corner of Squankham Yellowbrook, kind of coincident with the, with the Fazio property, so it's running away from you, and they're contain, they're containing it on site in a basin that was not there prior to this.
It's, it's running down the road towards Fazio?
No, it's running across their site, towards, if you look at the, look at that plan right there, you'll see the yellow area, I mean, Mike, identify where the basin is. So it's running from the top corner, which is the intersection, down to that basin.
Jennifer, the drainage from the county, county drainage runs actually northerly on Squankham Yellowbrook, e- westerly on Adelphia, discharges at the bridge.
There's also a drainage going across that way.
I'm saying...
What, Adelphia Road?
Yes.
Well, it might be, but that's existing.
No, there's no might, there is, because I was there during construction.
Fine, the point I'm making is that when the county did that bridge and the intersection realignment, they put that drainage in...
Yes.
And drained it to the bridge.
Right.
Every time that a development has been proposed, they have reviewed the drainage design and the capacity of their system for the drainage. Unfortunately, a lot of what you're pointing to is, is stream flooding, and the county we did that.
Yeah, I just, I just showed that, I know that's once in a blue moon, you know, a hurricane, but I just wanted to show you what did happen.
Okay. I'll go to the next one, Matt.
This is a picture of the, um, the site now, across the street, with all the boulders and flags. Those are all the tanks that are in clear view. I don't know if anybody's bothered, but I, but as a resident who takes care of their property, I am, that's why I put the pictures up there.
Mike, are they going to clean up the site, any, to what's existing?
Well, those tanks, for example, that were shown in there, Mr. Morchick has been continually trying to clean up his site, preparing for this project. trying to clean up his site preparing for this project. And he has certain marking tags on them, orange tags, and he's planning on having an auction for that material. So that's not there permanently. That's been taken and set there until he has his auction. As far as the beautification of the site, we feel the streetscape and the landscape buffer along the frontage, the landscape buffer along the frontage will help at least, you wouldn't be seeing that stuff. But anyway, that's our point.
On this map, could you show us where your house is, where your property?
It's on the corner.
You're on the very corner?
Yes.
Okay.
Directly across. So I get the view all the time.
Did you understand that the resident is going to be gone on the property there?
The house?
Yes. That's going to be gone.
I object to that. House.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
My point is that he's being forced to do that.
Well, it's not forced, that's part of the application.
I understand, but would he do that if he wasn't doing construction on it?
If he got denied, he wouldn't be required to do that, no.
I understand, but to me, that's a part of somebody's character, how are they going to take care of things?
I, I understand, but it, it's not up to this board.
No, I'm just stating a fact.
If the application was denied, we, it, it becomes a code enforcement issue. And if, if they were in compliance, you know, as far as outdoor storage, it's really nothing this board could do.
I understand.
But it, on approvals, we can request and part of the application is the berms, buffers, you know, all of that, and then cleaning up the site. That's all part of the application.
This is part of everything, but my concern is the safety issue. Obviously, you know, the residents around there don't want to be breathing in silica.
Okay.
And I don't know if everybody is up on that. It's very dangerous. And if it's airborne, it's just as bad as asbestos.
Okay.
Silicon. It's one of the most common substances on earth. It can be found in materials like sand and rock and building products like concrete and brick. When the worker cuts, grinds, or drills materials that contain silica, dangerous crystalline silica dust is released into the air. As the worker breathes, silica crystals flow into his mouth and nose and down the air passages deep into the lungs. The tiny crystals enter the small, fragile air sacs where oxygen is absorbed into the blood. A new system cells called macrophages engulf and try to dissolve the crystals, but they are unable to. Over time, more and more crystals build up inside the macrophage cells. The macrophages carry the silica into the walls of the lung where they die. Scar tissue forms around the dead cell and spreads as more cells die. This damage can continue even after the exposure to silica stops. Eventually, so much scar tissue forms that the lungs can no longer function. For your permission, but how to protect yourself from silica exposure, visit worksavpc.com.
And is it a very short video after this and I'm done?
My, my question would be, are y'all going to be cutting block there?
No, absolutely not.
No, 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 there's no block cutting occurring on the outside of the site or, I believe, on the inside of the site.
Now, will the, will the manufacturing of the block be...
The manufacturing is pressing of the product, which, this is the, this is the video we showed last time, which we didn't have, we didn't have the benefit of sound and I...
I, I understand, but I, I want the questions on the record.
So no, there's no cutting.
No cutting outside?
Yeah, we needed Matt. You're right, you're right.
Right. So, do, no, hang, hang on just a second. Okay, so, any of the particles with the silica, is that going to be handled inside hoppers, in, inside storage bins? How is, how is the silica handled?
One, I mean, the, the video itself, I, I don't know who made it, I don't know how, how reliable that is. And I think it, it is pretty detrimental to, to, I mean...
No, I, I understand, but...
As it relates to the product itself, I can have my client come up and explain how the process exactly works and where the product is going to end up, which Mr. Geller provided testimony for about an hour and a half with regards to 95% of the production is going to be inside the current facility.
The, that, that's where I'm going.
Yeah.
The, the cement, which contains the silica, correct?
I'm not a scientist and I'm not, I can't speak to...
Yeah, the cement's pumped from the delivery trucks into the silos. They're never really exposed to the air. And then from the silos, they're introduced to the block manufacturing system. And there's not this emission of silica that you see when you cut concrete outside. That, it wouldn't be that cutting because you're fabricating the blocks or bricks to the size you need. There's no cutting. It's fabrication and selling.
So that, that's all interior, correct?
Yes, correct.
It's all, all contained?
We'll see on the next video.
So the bins that are outside that have the white and the red coloring?
They're silos.
That's in the hoppers, in the silos. Those are closed silos. You want to show this video, Matt? Because I, I think it shows the silos.
I cut down this video because it was eight minutes long. All vibration machines. That's the end of the video. Now, I understand it is inside, but I'm sure you're going to hear some things. And I don't know if the door is going to be open, if it's going to be closed. It's still a, a noise issue.
Do you hear anything now?
No.
Do, you, well, I, Mr. Alfieri, if you want to bring your...
I can bring my client up and we can...
Bring your client up because they, because I know they're facing now inside the building, correct?
They are. I, I actually personally did go through the site itself while it was operating so that Mr. Geller, we could talk, we could discuss the current sound.
I think regular diesel truck make more noise on the street than this machine make noise inside the building. You can ask the neighbor, we very quiet company and it's no, absolutely no noise. And this is no issue because all the equipment located inside our facility. And it's a normal noise, like we cut the stone, it's a noise. Like we polish the stone, it's a certain noise. And probably everybody of us also makes some noise.
But it's contained within the site.
But it's normal.
Correct? It's contained within your site, the actual structure.
It's inside the building?
Inside the building.
Inside the building, absolutely.
Okay, any, any cutting or anything like that that you do now, that's inside your building?
Yes, sir.
And that how, any facing, chisel facing or stone facing that you do now is done inside your building, correct?
Inside the building, absolutely. And we do everything with the recycling water. So it's no dust, nothing.
Okay, my, my other question is, do you, or is it a mechanical facing machine that you have that faces, that does the chisel face on your stone?
Chiseling, we almost don't do it, but we doing cutting and polishing.
Yeah, but is that done by mechanical?
Mechanical.
Mechanical?
Only mechanical, yes. We nothing to do with the hand.
Okay, so that, that's existing now inside the building, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you, you don't notice any noise?
No, not from what he's doing now.
Okay. As far as noise, I, I'd asked earlier about the vibrators. My concern was the silos outside the building having vibrators in the tube hoppers. That was my only concern.
It's made by vacuum. The vacuum take the whatever material needed from the silo.
It's vacuum?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a new modern technology. It's very quiet, very clean, and environmentally very, very friendly.
Okay. Yes, or Mr. Massa?
Isn't there a, a noise standard that the board has?
Yeah, there is, there is. It would have to meet that.
Of course.
It would have to meet that.
Of course.
But, but what, my, the reason I was asking those questions is because I, I am a little familiar with that type of business. What, I, I know he's facing mechanically inside now, facing the stone, which is permitted. And if you don't hear that, I don't think you're going to hear this.
Well, I don't know what part of the factory he had, he has his machinery, whether it's in the back or the front, so I...
It's, trust me, it's loud enough that if you can't hear it outside now, you're not going to hear this.
Well, and regardless, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
They're going to be, they're required to comply with the, the noise ordinance. And the noise ordinance during the day is 65 decibels at the residential lot line and at night, which you say you don't operate past 5:00 PM, so that wouldn't even come into play. If you're, you know, anything before, after 10:00 PM and before 7:00 AM is 50 decibels, but if you're not operating then, the daytime hours, the requirement is 65 decibels. So if, if the board acts favorably on the application and this moves forward and you hear noise during the day, you should complain that they're in violation of the noise ordinance and someone will come out with a meter and take readings at your property line to see what the decibel level is.
See the gentleman, the gentleman sitting right there? Go knock on his door if you hear noise. You know, if it's, if it's loud enough...
He works here in town hall.
He's right here, he'll, he'll take care of it.
I'm the director of land use and I'm head of code enforcement. So any complaints, code enforcement comes through our office and we investigate them.
Dante, I just want to clear something up. Obviously, the gentleman has a concern about airborne silica particulates. If this board were to look favorably on the application, would your client agree then to a condition in a resolution that there be no outside cutting of concrete?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, sir, any further questions?
I'm done.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
What's that? Yes. Okay, anyone else in the audience, please come forward. And I'll remind you, this is for questions and comments.
Kathy with a K. Kathy with a K?
Use the mic, please.
G, Gary, G.I.R.I., 773 Squonkum Yellow Brook. So my first question is that all the residents received a letter, two letters exactly, on dated February 14th and February 1st. And it didn't mention the manufacturing building at all. It was just for storage. So the residents in the area were never notified? I have both letters.
Okay, no, I know. Mr. Alfieri?
I'm just reading the note. You're, you're talking about the notice? Is that what you're speaking to?
We received two, right, February 14th, right, and February 1st. So the residents in the area who may not be here tonight, may not be aware this manufacturing plant is even being considered because it was only for storage.
Well, the, the notice we have states that the applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan and use bulk, use and bulk variance approval to expand an architectural stone product manufacturing plant, which speaks to the plant, with associated storage bins and storage areas, two storage buildings, a home barn, and a circulation driveway and stormwater manager. I'm not going to read the rest, but we do speak to the use itself.
But on the, like, agenda that we received today, the explanation is different.
The agenda's not what we control, that's the township's creative document.
It is in the agenda.
The notice is all we're required to provide.
Right, but we, the residents never see, received notice.
The notice was provided and the board took jurisdiction over it. We have proof that it was provided.
I can tell you, as the board attorney, I reviewed this and it does meet the municipal land use law. The agenda is the agenda that the board puts together, but the notice is legally sufficient. And we have here the proof that all the residents were served in many cases. We have the green cards and everything else, so notice was given. I don't want you to feel it hasn't been. And under, under the, under the MLUL, it's appropriate.
Okay.
But, please continue.
Okay, so my second question was the berm location and the trees. On this picture here where it said just dotted lines, is that going to be trees or just a chain link fence?
The dotted line represents the 50-foot buffer from the right of way of the road.
The trees will be in, out, within that buffer and then the fence will be internal to the trees.
So my question is, on this picture, you see, it looks like to be green trees to me? And then there's the slashes?
Yeah, the slashes are...
Are they going to extend that buffer all the way around?
It's going all the way.
Okay.
But to clarify, the berm is only going on Squonkum and then on the top is going to be to gray.
Right, but on the berm, there's going to be planting or something?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question, okay. And also, I spoke to the health department today and I guess because with, with the work they'll be doing in there, that you may require proper ventilation and filtration. Will that be addressed? Is that something that you address?
There's like internal, internal type ventilation, that's a building code issue that the building department would require if it's necessary. And then also the board of health, that's not something that we handle because it's kind of internal to the building. We really deal with like what you see from the air.
Okay, right, so the board of health said they wouldn't have anything to deal with inside the building, that some, maybe not the planning board, but someone in Hal would address that.
The building department.
The building department would handle that, under permits.
Okay, so if this application is approved, then from here it would go move on to other departments to look at?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, okay. And just with the increased truck, truck traffic, everyone is okay with that being in an area with schools and school buses? Because those two roads are heavily traveled with school buses. So my concern is school buses and increased truck, truck traffic.
We have Mr. Kennel that can provide an answer to that.
Mr. Kennel, you want to use the mic? Hand help?
You're, you're the singer. Yes. Both roadways, as we indicated, are, are county roadways, 500 series, which are designed and identified for truck traffic. And the amount of trucks that are going to be added to this site are minimal throughout the course of day. It isn't as if we're adding 10 trucks during when school operations or maybe one or two trucks. So the, the amount of trucks are going to be processed or added to this development will be a minimal increase. And the roadways are county roadways that can accommodate the, the delivery type vehicles.
So besides those eight trucks that you spoke of, there should be additional trucks because they'll be delivering the cement, correct?
The, the trucks I reference are the number of trucks delivering importing material. And then the other five, there's three trucks. You may have as many as three trucks a day importing material and as many as five trucks exporting material. That's a peak day, so that doesn't necessarily mean it's every single day, but on a, a peak day, you could have as many as eight trucks.
So, and the board's okay with that?
Well...
They haven't made their determination yet.
Oh, oh, okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, 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 got it. So I just asked to take, to take that into consideration.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. And also, that was touched on a little bit by Vinnie about the, right, the present property condition. There are seven cars that are parked there presently, don't move. There's going to be an auction. presently, don't move, there's gonna be an auction, do, I mean, do we know when that auction's gonna occur?
You can ask that.
That's what the applicant was gonna say, so there's no. No, he, there are seven cars that are parked there, and tires, and the applicant said he was gonna be auctioning them off to clean up the property, so you don't go, you don't have any sale rate.
That's an existing.
The client, sorry, sorry Chairman, the client has, uh, items on the property that he's getting rid of, and that, those are the items that he has flagged to get rid of.
Just to clarify, are you proposing to hold the auction on the site, or you're removing them from the site and selling them elsewhere?
That, that I. Is the auction gonna be taking place onsite or offsite?
Put it on the mic.
The trucks what we have on the parking lot, the truck what we have on the parking lot is old equipment, and we auctioned this, it's gonna be on, on May second and May sixteen, I believe.
On your property?
No, it's online.
Online?
Online auction, but we must present the people, come one day before the auction will be, to take a look on them, check if they working, and they gonna be gone, but in any case, this is parking lot.
Well, I mean, you can't just store random things in the parking lot.
No, we don't store the random things.
Th- th- these are vehicles that they were utilizing that they're now getting rid of. They're trucks, they're not.
I get it, I, I just, I, I think the concern is valid, you know, are, is all of a sudden all these people gonna come to the site, um, over two days?
But, but yeah, I, I think that's a code enforcement issue right now, you know, not, not as far as the board.
Well, no, because they're here, but no, because they're here asking for a, a variance, and so what they're doing on the site currently is something that the board can evaluate and determine whether or not it's appropriate. This is the first I heard of an auction.
Right.
So, that, to me, would be another use.
Well, the, the thing of it is, is this gonna be a continuing operation as far as auctions?
This is a one-time thing, this is an, this is an auction to get rid of, of, uh, materials and equipment my client no longer needs or utilizes, it's not a, um, he's now turning this site into an auction site, it is simply for the purpose of getting rid of the material, not material, the equipment that he no longer utilizes.
Okay, but thi- this is just basically a one-time thing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And my other question, um, as far as the property being maintained, the, the property between the built, present building and Squonkam Yellabrook, because it's not maintained right now, and over the course of the summer, it grows, for lack of a better word, tumbleweed, because then it all comes over to our properties and it is very difficult to clean up. So, how is that property gonna be maintained, I'm not sure exactly where that fence is gonna be, is there gonna be more of that, that tumbleweed land on the outside of the fence?
I think the berm and the fence will help prevent that.
It's gonna help it.
Because the fence will be inside the berm, and the berm is gonna be about four feet tall with plantings on top of it, so, I mean, listen, there could be some kind of catastrophic wind event that we've had lately, but generally, with the berm and the fence and the plantings, that should help to alleviate that issue, plus, that rear portion of the site is now gonna be gravel, where the storage bins are going, um, so that should help as well, I think, however, if you have consistent issues, you should contact Matt's office and he'll go out there and take a look.
We have contacted you before, so my question is, I usually wait until the tumbleweed is now on my property, can I contact you before to prevent that?
You can contact us at any time, we're gonna look into it, to issue a violation, the violation has to be present, so it can't be something that's gonna happen in the future.
No, no, if it's.
If the, if the grass is too tall, there's a maintenance requirement for property maintenance, commercial property maintenance code, and if they don't meet that, they will get a violation, and they'll have fourteen days to clean up.
Okay.
But also, just in my opinion, if you're gonna put this type of money into a project, I think you're gonna wanna keep it clean, I really do.
Hope so, because right now it's not.
I understand.
And I don't know if anyone here knows or about the safest distance between a manufacturing plant that does have silica and a residential area. So, is there some kind of, you know, environmental condition that we can say it should be so many feet, because it does travel far, and it's not only concrete, it's in granite, quartzite, and travertine, which all, those three materials they do, um, manufacture.
I understand, but they, the applicant's already testified that it's done indoors, and there would be no outdoor cutting of any materials.
All right, and then, when it goes to building code, then they're gonna look into filtration and ventilation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, and just, they're manufacturing, they're gonna be increasing, obviously, because they're, you know, having more buildings, so any, what percentage of their manufacturing's gonna increase by?
It's not an increase in building, because the block portion is taking up a third of the building that is currently being used for other things, so there's no expansion in the manufacturing, there's just a different product that they're offering.
Okay, all right, all right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward.
Lee Fankhauser, fifty-one Richard Road. And I just have a few comments, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The first comment that I have is, is, uh, the obvious elephant in the room, which is that this is a prohibited use, and I think that it's important to note that, um, because I believe that it would set a dangerous precedent to approve a, um, specifically prohibited use in the township of Howell, there are, there are a number of, of, uh, specifically prohibited uses, and for us to say, because an applicant, excuse me, an applicant comes before the board and makes a good argument, that we could approve a prohibited use that has been specifically denied in the town, um, so I think it's a very dangerous thing to even consider, given the, the potential for it to open doors for other prohibited uses to start businesses anywhere else in the, in the town. Secondly, I wanted to touch base with regard to this specific piece of property, um, as it was pointed out by Mr. Geller, uh, this is both SED overlay, but it's also an ARE, um, and I think that the, um, specifics regarding the ARE use are important to note, um, and that, uh, in the Land Use Amendment of July two thousand and sixteen, the last paragraph of that document indicated that, given the established sensitivity of lands located within the ARE zoning districts, it is recommended that any proposed development be conforming with the current zone requirements, as said requirements have been established to continue to maintain these critical areas of the township, any deviation from the established zoning requirements in the ARE zoning districts should be discouraged, so, not only is this prohibited use to start off with, this applicant is asking for a, a wide array of variances and, and, um, and waivers for this application, and you're in an area that, that was, was put together specifically so that this business could operate as a stone place, but this was ARE before, and this is the only area in the town that is an, uh, SED overlay, there's no other place in the town that's, that's, that's zoned this way, it, it's because it was supposed to be allowing this business to work, and not bring in heavy manufacturing into a, into an area that's SED, I think that, I mean, that is ARE too, this is surrounded by ARE too, um, and I just think that this is a complete mismatch of, of what should be placed in, in, in this area of the town, I, it's, I just, I think that the residents here are going to be, I, I understand the manufacturing business is going to be, uh, contained within the building, and that there are ventilation, you know, requirements that they're gonna have, but outside of this, of this business, you're going to have, from what I understand, um, forklifts, there're gonna be front loaders, there're gonna be dump trucks coming in, bringing in raw materials, there's gonna be concrete trucks bringing in raw materials, there're gonna be delivery trucks bringing in materials and bringing materi- and bringing the manufactured material out. Now, all these trucks have the reverse warning, the loaders got the reverse warning, these residents are gonna be hearing the outside trucking all day long, um, and I know that they've, you know, that the applicant has tried to compare it to the next door building, but, you know, the, the uses really don't, they're not equal, they're not the same, um, so I would just, you know, just ask the board to consider these very important points, and not the least of which is that the town has specifically prohibited this use from the town. It's very important, I think, for you, for this, for you all to consider that before thinking about approving this, uh, it could have, uh, consequences that are outside of the immediate application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wanna try to get a feel, is there any, how many more people wanna come up, make comment or ask questions? Okay.
My name is Jeremy Treadwell. Jeremy. Treadwell, T-R-E-A-D-W-E-L-L. Six fifty-three Squonkam Yellabrook Road. Okay, um, first of all, I'd just like to, um, agree exactly with what Mr. Fankhauser just said, and ask a question, um, why was the concrete manufacturing taken out of the permitted use in the first place?
You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be questioning the board, sir, you'd be questioning one of the applicants.
Well, I would imagine since it was, since it was taken out in two thousand and seventeen, I would imagine that some board members may know that.
The governing, the governing body.
Okay, all right, so, I mean, I think before you actually agree that it should be put back in, that you should at least understand that, that question, right? Um, the other point is that, um, we heard some questions about heights, um, but at one point, there was a, a comment, I think, that the, um, the silos will be thirty-two feet, is that correct?
Less than thirty-three.
So, thirty-two plus, um, so, that's gonna be high above any sideline, we, that's gonna be very visible, and that, that goes right into what Mr. Fankhauser just said about the, the, um, the use of the area, thirty-two feet, that's very high, and that's gonna impact upon residents and upon the, the visibility of that site, it's an ARE site.
Just for the record, uh, in the ARE zones, the max permitted structure height for even a single-family house is thirty-five feet.
Okay, but thirty-two feet, it's got, it's a silo, I mean, a silo is not as slightly as a house.
I'm just letting you know what the ordinance says.
Mike, what, what's the existing height of the buildings?
I'm not sure, I think it's probably about twenty, I'm guessing it's probably about twenty-four or so, twenty, twenty-four, it's high.
Right.
About twenty-four feet.
Okay, and in the proposed buildings, what's the height?
Uh, the two storage buildings is twenty-eight feet to the ridge.
Twenty-eight.
The silo is gonna be higher than the buildings, and it's gonna be the most unsightly thing there.
But it meets, it meets the standard.
It may, it may do, but it's still.
They're under the standard and they're very small.
It's still, it's still an impact on the residents.
Opinion, but it's very small an area compared to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close public? Second. Who, who moved? Mr. Massa moved, seconded by Mr. Martins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Professionals, any further comments? Board members, y'all have any questions or comments?
I got a couple. I just would like to know, um, the workers that are in the plant, do they wear respirators while they're working?
Yes.
They all, they all wear them while they're cutting?
Please, please come forward so it gets picked up on the record, please.
The workers who cutting the material with the bridge saw and with the water, they don't use their respirator, because it's no dust, the people who polish the stone also with the water, they use respirator, every day we give them new respirator. Plus, we have, uh, I bought a special system with the water, it's suck any dust, even invisible dust, it suck and burn with the water. We very, very modern, uh, manufacturing, and we have certification from, uh, most of the providers of the material, what we very sufficient company, and, uh, we don't have this kind of issue, because the company come and they check it out, what kind of equipment you use, uh, before they give you certifications.
Do you have a type of recovery system that collects the dust?
Of course.
And then what do you do with the dust, you dispose it?
Dust burn in the water.
The dust goes into the water?
In the water, and then recycling, and.
And what happens to the material that comes out?
After accumulate the slurp, we have dumpster and we dump, the company.
So, you take it to a specific place where you're allowed to dump it?
Of course, of course.
And when you construct a building, um, you know, with that, you're gonna work inside, is there any type of special, um, acoustics that, you know, to absorb the noise?
It doesn't require.
It doesn't require, it's, it's not that.
It's normal things, yeah.
So, if I were fifty feet outside?
You will not hear anything.
I wouldn't hear anything?
Absolutely.
So, your regular hours are eight to five, you're doing everything you're doing, anybody outside isn't gonna hear anything?
Nothing.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
We would like to respond to some of the, uh, the opposition.
If the board wants to hear it, uh, Mr. Frankhauser referred to this as a prohibited use, it was removed, uh, less than two years ago, um, this application does apply to a specific property that already has an existing stone business, I think we put that on the record, that it's an existing use and it's a compatible new use, and we understand we do need to use variance, we thought we presented the proper proofs, and one other thing that was said, was that the SED one zone was created not intended to attract new business, and was meant for the former business that was there, well, that's not really true, because the Fazio Adjacent Steel Fabrication, uh, plant was raw land, it was farmland, and was approved by the planning board as a permitted use, and that's absolutely a new business that is in the zone, and it was done with the required approvals, and some variance relief or impervious coverage, because it needed it, in a SED dash one zone, so I just wanted to correct those things, I mean, those were things offered like, no new uses should be allowed, but this is a new use and so was Fazio.
Nothing further.
Okay, you wanna give a summation?
So, uh, Mr. Geller provided some, some substantial testimony to support this application, he, he alluded to the use that we're looking to add to the current site and the cohesiveness that it has with the current use itself, uh, we had Mr. Kennel come on and provide testimony stating that the traffic itself is not going to impact the, the roadways, um, and we had my client, the applicant himself, come up and just clearly state what this use is, where it's going to be located, and how it's not going to impact the exterior portion of the property, so I think that based upon all the testimony that we provided over the past two meetings, um, we would respectfully request that the board approve, um, the plans along with all variances and waivers as requested.
Any further from professionals? Mr. Troply, any direction? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, what we have here is, um, an application that currently uses stone to, to make products, and the applicant has said that they're going to do a lot on this property. But the issue is the ordinance, and it has been stated on the record that this is a new application for concrete. Stone is natural, concrete is not natural, it has to be manufactured. And looking at concrete, looking at what the ordinance says, manufacturing of asphalt and concrete shall be prohibited, if this application previously had a concrete business, then it could be approved, this is brand-new, this is two years after the ordinance. This is brand new, this is two years after the ordinance. I'm going to make a motion to deny this application based on the ordinance and the fact that this is a new business, even though it's the same business, it is a new part of this business which is prohibited.
Okay, you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Not hearing a second, Mr. Chairman. Are there any other motions on the floor?
Do I have any more, another motion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's this big plant going next door, what are they doing there?
This is steel manufacturing.
Steel manufacturing.
Yeah.
And when was that approved? Did we approve it?
2015.
2015.
2015? Thank you.
By the planning Board. Do I have another motion? Or a second to the one that's on the...
I'd like to think about it a little bit, I didn't realize we were going to vote tonight.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, I didn't realize we were going to vote on this tonight, I would like to think about it a little bit.
I don't think we can.
Oh, you don't think we can?
No, sir. We have to act.
To be quite frankly, the applicant's been here three times, he deserves a vote. You know, Mr. San Clemente made a motion, I didn't hear a second, so that motion fails, and it's up to the Board to continue.
Do I have another motion? I had to have something.
Somebody has to do something up there, to be quite frankly.
I'm actually going to second Mr. San Clemente's motion. I understand what people are talking about here, and I know there's a lot of improvements, but there is what Mike just said, I agree, there is an ordinance in place for this reason, and maybe we need to, to the President, and, you know, so I'm going to vote no, second the motion.
I'll give you a second to motion, folks, please, hold on.
Yeah. Okay. Can we have a roll call? No, you either vote yes for denial, or no for...
Oh, yes, yes is for denial.
Yes is for denial.
Ready?
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
I'm kind of agreeing with Herb.
I'm going to pass Mr. Hughes for a moment, and he can get on the line.
Mr. Massa?
No.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I'm going to have to vote yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yeah.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Nansen?
I'm an alternate.
Back to Mr. Hughes.
Okay, you want to go back to Mr. Hughes?
All right, I say yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Well, I want to put further on the record, there is not a concrete plant on this site. This is not an existing concrete plant for starters. It never was. Stone manufacturing is permitted in the SED zone. 2017, the Planning Board took up the aspect of the SED zones, specifically the SED zone. This is a SED 1 zone. This is more of a light intensity, as what I would envision that the master plan and at the council took up, and made their decision to remove concrete and asphalt manufacturing. I believe we do have certain sections within the township that do have this type of manufacturing. It existed, it has existed in that certain area for many years, and I don't think the intent was of council to remove that, to again, for this Board to place it into a light industrial zone. I really don't. The intent was to keep applications like this from coming to the Board to get relief for lighter industrial, instead of keeping it in the areas to where it already exists. I am voting yes also for denial. I do not believe that we should open the door to concrete manufacturing in an area that doesn't exist now, so yes.
Motion carries, application's denied.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Board.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, no vouchers, is there anything else before the Board? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Donalds, seconded by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So on the Board, adjourn at 10:45.